...in the back of the room. Okay. I'd like to call, to order the Avalon City Council meeting of December 20th, which was also included, a meeting of the Avalon Housing Authority. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I think it's hospital.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could stand for a moment to remember Roger Upton Jr., who passed away last week, and also a longtime voter to Avalon, Al Berry. And on behalf of the City Council and all of the employees in Avalon, we would like to wish everyone in Avalon and our visitors to Avalon a very merry Christmas, a very safe and healthy holiday season, and we will not see you again until 2017 at the second meeting. So we will see you then and have a great holiday. Okay, announcements?
Would you like us to roll call, Madam Mayor?
Oh, I think you might want to do that, even though I see we're all here.
Um, you are. But if I don't, I will not get a passing mark from Ms. Ratty, who is unable to be here this evening.
She may be watching.
Councilmember Sampson?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Cassidy?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Olson?
Here.
Mayor Marshall?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, very good job. Are there any announcements?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to mention that there has been a request to pull Item 12, which is the Casino Dock Restaurant, to pull it and place it on the next agenda. But I'll leave that to that point, but I did want to let those in the audience know of that, and you know of that request.
Okay, thank you. Written communications. And then, City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I wanted to mention four items. The first is that the Request for Qualifications, the RFQ, for Preparation of Interim and Permanent Development Impact Fees has been prepared and is being published and circulated to professionals in the field. That went out today. They are due by January 24th. Secondly, the Executive Officer of the Los Angeles Regional Water Quality Control Board, Sam Unger, has agreed to meet with the City Manager on January 5th to discuss, among other things, the use of certified private desalinization plants to produce fresh water. A third is the Chief Administrator and Superintendent of the Long Beach Unified School District has agreed to meet with City Manager in late December, that is, the 20th or 29th, to discuss opportunities for recreational facilities and housing opportunities and collaboration. I'm very pleased to spoke with Mr. Steinhauser this morning. Also, I wanted to just mention, without going into detail, that notices have gone out and will begin going out, have gone out and will continue going out today to owners of property regarding abatement of trees deemed and determined to be hazardous or potentially hazardous in the community. They need to be removed, and we're asking for the cooperation of owners of those trees to make those removals possible. There is a period, they have a right to appeal on those matters if they chose to, or simply to make it easier, they could just remove the trees.
Thank you.
Where do we come up with the list of trees?
The list of trees was made through inspection. An arborist was retained to examine those trees, and a report, written report, was prepared. And then forwarded to the City Attorney's Office for review.
Thanks.
Okay. Presentation. And if I, I'm sorry, if I could kind of take things out of order, because this isn't on the agenda, but if I could please do so, and Rich Hernandez, if you would please come up to the podium. Richard Hernandez?
All right, it's you.
As you may know, a couple of years ago, we started a program where we recognized those young people in the community who have bettered themselves by completing a higher, an institution of higher learning. So, we have one here. Rich Hernandez just got his GED last week, we're very excited. The City of Avalon honoring Brett Stephen Hernandez on his graduation from the San Francisco Police Department Academy, whereas on September 11th, 1990, Brett Stephen Hernandez was born to Richard and Lori Hernandez and graduated from Avalon School in 2009. On April 11th, 2016, Brett recorded to his first day at the San Francisco Police Department Academy. After eight long demanding months, Brett graduated from the Academy on December 2nd, 2016. He made his first arrest on December 15th, 2016. The San Francisco Police Department Academy's mission is to enhance professionalism throughout the San Francisco Police Department through quality education, training, and support that meets or exceeds the needs of the community it serves. Brett and other law enforcement personnel put themselves before others daily to keep our communities safe and secure by safeguarding life and property, protecting against bribery disorder, protecting the innocent against deception, and the weak against oppression or intimidation. Now, Derek, for please recognize Brett Hernandez and his great achievement, and wish him luck on all his future endeavors. December 25th. Congratulations.
You have a safety presentation by Southern California Edison on Catalina's propane gas system.
Are we skipping us tonight? Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's Tracy Dugnan, and I'm going to be presenting our annual gas safety presentation. So, as most of you already know, here on Catalina, we provide propane gas to our homes and businesses. We have a safety brochure that kind of covers all our safety tips and information on the safety to your family, home, and businesses in regards to the gas pipeline system. Tonight, I'm just going to be covering some of those safety tips that we list out in our brochure and want to share with everyone. Our, our gas is supplied via a pipeline system, and our system is installed, designed, and monitored by the strict standards used by Edison, our pipeline industry codes, and local, state, and regulator, our federal government agencies. Now, typically, you know, major gas systems are, or failures are rare on the island, but we do encounter like gas odor calls from customers from time to time. We, for the system of the safety and reliability of our gas system, we do routine patrols, visual inspections, we monitor our gas pressure on a 24-hour basis. We also have cathodic protection installed to prevent rusting and minimizing corrosion. Our main, our, where are our underlying propane gas lines at? Our main pipelines typically run down the middle of the streets in front of your homes and businesses. The service lines, however, will typically run from those mains to your meter boxes located around your homes. This picture right here shows a typical gas meter. What we're, we're showing is this, the gas coming out of the ground and going into the meter, and then coming up out of the meter into, which would lead to your, your residence. The customer responsibility starts at the point that the pipes come out of the meter and go to your residence. Now, customer responsibilities also include checking your piping periodically, as they also corrode and require to be, you know, are required to be inspected. Most plumbing and heating contractors would be able to assist you in coming out and locating and inspecting your pipelines and your repairing your pipes. You should always test your gas appliances to make sure everything is well-ventilated and connected correctly. One main thing we want to point out is, if you have pipelines that are running through your yard, it's very important to make sure that you don't put things over that pipeline. You don't want to build a fence, you don't want to have a sidewalk, you want to keep those areas clear in case of emergencies, so that the proper personnel can get there to make, you know, repairs if necessary. Also, with your meters, we don't, you want to make sure that you keep that area clear of debris, and you're not stacking things on top of that. Again, it's a safety issue to be able to make sure that they're working properly, they're inspected properly, and can be assessed in an emergency. If you plan on putting a tree in your yard, or a fence line or something, it is very important that you call Dig Alert at least 48 hours in advance. When you do that, an Edison personnel will be able to come out, they'll be able to mark any pipelines that are on your facility, on your property, so that you could avoid any dig-ins. If for some reason you do have a dig-in and you, you hit a pipeline, please call Edison immediately at the number, the 800 number listed above. Even if it's just an exposed pipe, or anything of that nature, we, we want to be able to come out and assess the pipe while it's, it's opened. So, how to recognize a propane gas leak? There's, there's several different ways, smell, listening, looking. With our gas over here, we put an odorant in it, because propane naturally does not contain an odor, it's odorless, and you can't usually see it. You may be able to hear it, it would be a hissing sound or whistling, and in order to visually see a leak, you'd want to be looking for discolored plants, maybe bubbling coming from your pipes, dead plants around there, damaged pipes around, on your service. As I said, we, we add an odorant, but another characteristic of propane that's different from natural gas is that it does not rise, it settles, it's heavier than air, and so a lot of times, our first instinct is to open windows and doors and that nature, and, and we don't want to do that, because it's just, it doesn't ventilate the same way. So, let's see, I want to go to the next one. So what we, what we would like for customers to do is, if, if you suspect a gas leak, vacate the area, evacuate the area as soon as possible, and then call from a safe location. You'll want to call 911 and SCE at the 800 number. And you know, we live in a small town, and it's very common for us to pick up the phone and call the person we know, but when we're, when we're reporting on gas leaks, we want to be able to track them, we want to make sure they're going through the proper channels, and they're getting to the right people to get out there to repair it. So it's very important that we call the 800 number. Also, when you, when you vacate the area, make sure to warn others to keep away, we don't want other people going into the area. As I mentioned before, do not open the doors or windows to ventilate. If you're outside, move away from the area, you want to go into the wind and away from the gas. And do not eliminate any ignition sources. Even flipping on a light switch can be an ignition source, your cellphone, any of those kind of things, motors, equipment, we don't want to be touching any of that. If you have, if you suspect where a gas leak is coming from, I don't, we don't want you going in and trying to turn off the equipment that's near it, any of that, just immediately evacuate and call 911 and Edison, and we'll send the proper people out to take care of So again, that's, that's pretty much all I have. I have our customer service number listed up here. Also, if you're looking for more information regarding our gas, it's available on the sce.com/catalina site. And we've also added in our brochures, the code red, and I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but it's located on the city of Avalon. It's, kind of acts like a reverse 911. When you go to the site, you enter your name, your address, your phone number, and it, it'll, it'll call you when there's an emergency happening in the town. It's a very nice tool. So that is all I have. Any questions?
Council, the community?
All right, thank you.
Thank you, nice to see you here. Yes. Okay, so once, once again, I've taken things out of order, but we have a presentation by Audra McDonald, and then we will go to Councilmember and Mayor's report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, you have not seen me here in a little while, so I am here to give you an update on all things transit. Just some reminders about what we offer. It's public transportation in the form of fixed route, which is the Garibaldi Dial Ride for persons 65 years plus and persons with disabilities. Both systems operate seven days a week. Dial Ride operates from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The Garibaldi Route starts every morning at the Cabrillo Mall at 7:20 AM, and the end times depend on the day of the week and the season. I have some statistics for you, we've been operating for six months. For Dial Ride, it's $2 per ride, and the riders can schedule rides in advance, and I know that Avalon Transit welcomes that. Total ridership through November 2016 Dial Ride riders. The Garibaldes service started a couple days after Dial Ride on June 6th. It's $1 to ride, and the total ridership through November, 36,459 people, which is a pretty impressive number. Both the Garibaldi and Dial Ride services have had small service changes. The changes are the result of a combination of factors that include monitoring, monitoring rider data, feedback from the bus drivers, feedback from passengers, fiscal monitoring, meaning if, if we're not seeing ridership for two buses, only go down to one, and of course prioritizing safety. This is not the finalized map, but this shows you just a little bit of the changes that have happened. The Garibaldes changes, changes included moving, reducing, and simplifying bus stops and locations. And the Dial Ride changes included ending the service at 6:00 PM, which the Council approved back in October. Transportation Concepts, who's the city's contractor, and the city will continue to work together to fine tune the service. E-Bus Challenges, because it's the elephant in the room, so we're going to talk about it a little bit tonight. As part of the ongoing concerns regarding certain design issues with the E-Buses, which have been voiced by our great mechanics, Derek and Luis, Transportation Concepts brought over their transit fleet maintenance supervisor, Frank Dot, and Frank spent a lot of time with Derek and Luis, and, and myself, and Dennis. Frank has been involved in the maintenance of transit buses for over 20 years. He's worked in Seattle, he's worked in the greater Los Angeles area, he's, he's a really nice guy with a wealth of knowledge, and we're really lucky that Transportation Concepts has them in their toolbox to help us. He spent two days, and based on the findings from the inspection, the city sent a letter to E-Bus advising them of the corrective actions that need to be performed. And that went out, I think, about two weeks ago. And then here's the picture, they're actually under the bus, that's Frank with the glasses, and then you know Brett from council meetings, and Derek's hiding in the background. So they didn't, he, he got under the buses, he was in the buses, he rode the buses, he spent a lot of time. So next steps on the E-Bus Challenges would be, continue the dialogue with E-Bus in an effort to have the repairs made to the satisfaction of the city, keeping safety as the primary focus. Continue to utilize the services of Transportation Concepts, including an additional inspection by Frank, and he wants to bring over one of his colleagues who has expertise in the electric transit industry, technology. And once the permanent and accepted repairs are made to the buses, then we can inquire about extended warranty options. So we're working on that, too. So what's next? As the program evolves, the goal of Avalon Transit is increased ridership, simplification of bus stop locations, permanent signage, benches at bus stops where they're feasible and safe, and the rollout of Google Transit and the Swiftly Real-Time App. The new simplified bus route is complete. It was a long process, and we used rider and driver feedback, and we included ride-alongs with interested parties, and included Chief Krug and, and some council members. Staff is currently working to design the permanent bus stop signage, and the signage will be affixed to permanent posts, so no more freestanding sign posts, which will be nice. And we'll also have two sets of signs, so they'll be changed out seasonally, which will simplify it when people are looking at it, because right now, it's complicated. You look at it, and it's like, well, is it winter season, or is it summer season? So we're, we're looking at ways to just make it a lot simpler, we'll have the Swiftly App information on there as well. The bus stop GPS coordinates have been provided to Trillium, who is the consultant that's developing Google Transit and Swiftly information. We're continually updating and refining the website, curb painting for the new stops, some of them are just a little bit of a red zone, red curb extension, development of a new route map and a simplified brochure, finalize and distribute the rider survey to residents and employees in the Pebble Beach area. And then we're also utilizing free training offered by the city's transit insurer, which includes a secret rider program, which we don't know when that's going to happen, because it's secret.
It's a secret.
And then they'll give, they'll give us the data. And then we're also going to be doing a management and bus driver training in March, which is really exciting. Public transit is an important asset to a community, and although there's always room for improvement, I think that the city should be proud of the accomplishments to date, including moving a total of 38,565 passengers in six months, seven-day-a-week bus service, zero emission transit buses, offering bus service that is aligned with both residents and visitors, and having an entire fleet that is ADA compliant. And that is the end of my presentation. Do you have any questions?
One question.
Yes.
Do we have a comparison of this year's numbers versus last year's numbers for the bus and the trolley and such?
I do have that, and I would be hap- Hold on. I would be happy to either provide those to you via email, or whatever, whatever you would, whatever format.
Email's fine.
Okay, great. Anything else?
So if, if you're going to work on the permanent signage, it sounds like you're working on the permanent signage before you do the survey out to Pebble Beach.
Well, so, so the idea with the Pebble Beach is that there would only be one stop out there, and it, that's a good point. I mean, right now, we only have two buses, and I think I shared with you that I'm a little reticent to start running the bus all the way out to Pebbley until, the other thing about the Pebbley Beach is that I, what we're, what we're visualizing is that it wouldn't run that route all day. It wouldn't always go to Pebbley. It would maybe have three deviated runs out there. And we can, the signage is really not that expensive, so, I mean, if, if Pebbley Beach happens and we get all that feedback, we could, we can, yeah.
And if it's more employees and employer kind of a thing?
Well, but I think that the Buffalo Nickel would probably appreciate driving some, some traffic out there, so, yeah.
Any update on the Scanso Beach area?
Back to what I was saying with Annie, right now, we're only operating two buses, and although those are goals that we have, I think right now, with only having two buses, I, I'm kind of hesitant to extend the route, but it's something that we've talked about at length, and will be, I think it's a good idea, I think it'll increase our, our fare, our fare box, for sure.
We, and, and I've kind of forged that question with the Island Company on a couple of occasions, and I know the City Manager wrote him a letter, because right now, there's quite a cluster, especially in the summer, at that stop by the Casino Arch.
The goal is to have everything dialed in, whatever we need to do on the city side by May, so that when the season hits, we are, we are fine tuned and not limping through the summer like we did this last summer, which we still did it, so.
So like Annie was saying, it gets clustered down there by Step Beach. So say the Island Company gets the wrong bus, and they come there, how do they go about who gets what spot first down in that area? Because I could see that happening down the road somewhere.
It happens already.
How does it, how do you handle that?
How do you guys handle that, that part of it?
Come up to the podium, please.
Yeah, no, exactly. That's why I'm asking.
Hi, George.
The main problem that we encountered was the fact that the information that the Scanso Beach had up there is misleading, because some days, they were not running. An example, Monday through Thursday, they weren't running. Or even on weekends, if their bus broke down, they only have one bus, and, and the way I see it, the city was losing firm money. So, I think even now, that it's winter time, it would be great for us to try that route, even though we have two buses, like Audra says, because, you know, our revenues have-
The question though is, when you're back with the city buses there, and they pull up, you guys just all share?
Well, we didn't share, because they have the right. We didn't have permission to get any people there, but-
No, 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 at the VFC.
No, yeah, we used to share, we used to share that.
It didn't work out?
It worked out, yeah.
Well, but it doesn't. It looks like a cluster when people are going by in their golf carts and their pickups behind it.
People, they don't know if we are going there, you know, and, yeah, the confusion for the back.
And I'm, and I'm saying, it isn't the safest, because you've got two buses in an area that isn't big enough for two buses.
I think that's a transportation permit thing, though, where they can stop and start.
It is a transportation-
Yeah.
So we gave them permission to go there also?
In, in 2014, I believe, the permit was issued. So we could certainly communicate with them, we could look at their permit, we could have more conversation, and if, to the extent that there's conflicts, then you need to, we should just fix it and let you know what, what that fix is.
That would be good, get back to-
There is, as you say, a lot of congestion at that, at that point.
And I think George, George's point is really valid, too, which is that people are confused, you know? So I think conversation the City Manager could have with the Island Company would probably be beneficial for everyone.
And that one other little issue that I, or, not issue, but, but, we're pulling our buses up at the mall and staying there when other people are getting off of the bus, I mean, getting off of the boats by float four and five, and the Island Company bus is parking in front of there and getting our folks, but we're parking back there. So I don't, and when there's no-
So is, does a party bus go out there and pick people up?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't, I, see, that's back to a transportation permit thing, again, I mean, that's kind of out of mind.
They park by float four and float, float five and pick them up.
And I think that's on cruise ship base, maybe?
Probably, but still.
And I kind of thought that would be an ideal spot for us.
Exactly.
Well, we've talked about that, too.
Yes, we did.
We talked about, you know, the location where it is now, and then float four and five, and I kind of feel like it's, it's splitting the baby, because on, on one, you're getting boats that have, what, 350 people? And then on four and five, so I, I think maybe signage that says public buses that way, or something, I mean, I think we could handle that piece of it, I just, I'm not sure which one would be better. We could also try it, but then we're moving bus stops a lot.
Have we tried that yet?
No, we have not.
That might be something to look into. Flat area.
Yeah.
And like you said, if you have the proper signage, maybe people would go that way.
Or just move-
And it would be out of the way, because it is congested on that corner right there by that bench, when everybody's walking off.
Part of the problem with float four and five, though, is the accessibility. You know, I guess if you went further down, where they could take a ramp to it, I mean, these are all things that we can-
I just look at.
Talk about.
Yeah. I mean, that would be something we, I think we did talk about it.
Yeah.
Be something to try, anyway.
The accessibility you're talking about is because the walkway's down here, and there's only two staircases that go up to the upper level.
Right, and so where the bus parks now, there's no obstruction, right? Because it's all-
And they can see the bus when, when they get off the boat.
And then they can also access it if they're, if they have, you know-
Wheelchair baggage.
Right, exactly.
Luggage.
But I think maybe even signage, and then something, when we redesign the mall, we can change it all, so it's better.
Even if you did it right at the end of the driveway there, where it's still red.
Just move it up further?
Yeah, just move it up further, just right by that hydrant, where the sidewalk starts. You still have access for wheelchairs and stuff. At least it's not on an angle, it would be up flat with proper signage, it's just right there, a couple feet either way.
Well, we could try it both ways, and then come back and give, and let you know if there was any changes, and if it was increased or a decrease, I mean, we could totally do that. That's not hard to do at all.
Thank you, that was very thorough. Questions? Thank you. No, community?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So now we will go to Councilmember reports, and who would like to start? And who would like to start?
You want me to start?
Yes, please.
I do want to point out that since our last meeting, to just make a mention of remembrance of Pearl Harbor Day, and thank you to all the currently serving military personnel, as well as all the veterans as well. I also attended the Gateway Cities Council of Government meeting and Transportation Committee meeting on December 7th, and most notable item was a discussion regarding the Measure M information campaign. Let's see, a thank you to city staff for a fabulous holiday party on Friday night. That was a lot of fun and, actually, a lot of fun, and good job to everybody who participated in that. And when we, lastly, when we had our goal setting meeting last week, we were very thorough, for sure, but I, we were remiss in adding one item as a hard goal, and that was to continue with the affordable housing, to come up with a project or a plan or something for affordable housing. So I just wanted to make sure that we could add that to documented pieces of our goals, whatever comes back that we work forward on, if we could just add to continue down the path. I know we've already started, but just to have that in writing would be great. And that's all for me.
Last Thursday, I attended the LA County Selection Committee meeting, where a collection of the city governments get together to nominate people to fill positions on public boards. This one was for the Metro Board. And there'll be another meeting of that committee on January the 5th. But it was, it's important for us to go. We went to a meeting, and unfortunately, we had some miscommunication. There wasn't a quorum. I would have been the quorum, but now that I'm the representative, this time we had 35 of the 37 cities, so they didn't even need me. But it was good to get up there, show our involvement there. And then on January, January 5th is the league meeting and also selection meeting. And last night, the, last night? Two nights ago. Never was. The hospital had their Christmas party that they invited us to, and it was very, very nice, pleasant party up at the airport in the sky. Food was really good, a lot of, a lot of turnout. A little cold, though.
Yes. Very. Yes. Councilmember Sampson?
Yes. I wanted to ask, the city manager has, or anybody for that matter on this dais, has Janice Hahn reached out to us, the new county supervisor, in any way, shape, or form?
Yes, I actually have had communication with Mr. Ippolito, the chief, Nick Ippolito, the chief of staff. I know the chamber has invited, the Chamber of Commerce has invited Supervisor Hahn and Mr. Ippolito to a January meeting, a January celebration, if you will, of her election. And I've also had subsequent communication with staff in their office about some issues that we're concerned about. They seem to be very anxious to reach out and to be interested in concerns that you have.
Great. That's good to hear. I want to make sure we have the support of the county, as we did with Don Kenobi.
And I just, you know, at the league cocktail party that I hosted last Thursday night, Janice Hahn attended along with her staff, and I introduced myself and urged her to come out to Avalon as quickly as possible. And so she said she would, you know, work with that. So I did talk with her personally on Thursday.
Great. That's good. That's very important. We continue that relationship with that office. Now, I want to ask our staff also about the Corolla report and the Southern California Edison expert report that's supposed to already be in our hands, or at least by the next 10 days, but we're understanding that we're not going to get that report now that has to do with the fresh water that we drink. So I want to know what our next step is. I mean, because they could just continually keep putting us off, like they've done in the past. So do you have any input from that yet, and why they're, they're not completing that report already?
Yes, I'll give you the, what I know is, I think there was an impression by members of the council and some of us that there would be a report in December, at your December meeting, to discuss what their expert has come up with. I was told today, when I asked about that presentation, that the consultant asked for more time to complete the report. That's what they, that's what they said. Based on the meeting that the city attorney and I had with CPUC, with the Public Utilities Commission, Mr. Rami Kalan and Terrence Shia, we had understood that they were going to be speaking with Edison soon, and that we would all get together then in January to have a, hopefully, a productive discussion of what's, what next for SCE and the city in regard to those issues that you, as a council, have raised about drought regulation and about water supply and storage.
Right. Okay, great. So we also spoke about Corolla Engineering and this SCE expert communicating and sharing information and coming up together with a consolidated effort to quench our thirst here.
We have shared all of the reports that Mr. Corolla has done with Southern California Edison, and we are anxious to see one of their reports regarding the product of those discussions.
I think if you, and this isn't really a laughing matter, but I, you have to be cynical about some things when you don't get the results you want. It's just kind of laughable sometimes. If you would have asked me two months ago, when they promised us to get that report out, I would have told you, there's no way you're going to do it. You're going to be late. You're going to put it off, something's going to go wrong, and you're going to tell us you can't do it. So my concern is that if they don't show up on the 17th, and when they say they're going to give us this report, that we go ahead with Plan B, C, D, or E, whatever we need to, to go over their heads and get the job done that we need to get done, to give the relief to the community that we need, in hopes that next year we'll have enough water, whether it rains or not, somehow, some, some way. So I'm a little disappointed with Edison, but it's not the first time, and I resonate the concerns of the constituents that I represent. And I'm totally disappointed that they're not here and they're not doing what they said they were going to do. My next question to you guys, and these aren't really announcements, these are pretty much questions, prying and prodding and trying to figure out how we can move forward with these, these different issues. So the casino easement area that has, that's in between Island Company, well, it's actually Island Company property, but between the road and our dock, do we know what's going on with that? Did they come up with a resolution to whether or not, and whose property that is? That's all I want to know.
Maybe I could ask the director. I know that the surveyor, who we've talked about a few occasions, has done the survey work and was, and said that there was some questions they had with regard to that topic, and they were going back deeper into the matter.
Okay. So we're still working on it? It's active?
Yes, deeper is probably better.
Yes, absolutely.
So, although I can't guarantee what they're going to tell us.
Well, that's...
Mr. Jake?
Okay, so that's good. They're still working on it. Okay. That's all I needed to know. And yes, we need to get to the bottom of that, because we might be paying rent on some place that we actually own. So that's what my concern is on that area. And I wanted to thank the Public Works crew for cleaning up Wrigley Terrace Road, because it's a, it's a very well-used road. It was a mess full of rocks, and I understood that Island Company wasn't able to clean it up, so the city went ahead and did it. And that was absolutely necessary. It was very dangerous up there. And I thank that crew for doing that. They did a great job, by the way. It looks nicer and it's a heck of a lot safer. Okay. I also have a question about a meeting that was, that we've been talking about. This is an ongoing thing with Santa Catalina Island Company Housing and their project that's, that's going to go on out at Hamilton Cove, or that might go on, depending whether or not the housing is available, whether they have credits, whether they have deficits in that area. Do you have a report on that, or just some, some kind of an update for the community?
Maybe the city attorney.
I can. So the city staff, planning department, and well as our office concluded the audit, which was to determine the number of spaces that they, the number of housing units that they were required to provide from the date of the ordinance until now. And utilizing that, we looked at the spaces that they claimed that they had provided, as well as the number of employees. They did provide us payroll records with the employees' names X'd out. And going through that process, we determined that if all of the units built from, well...
Spaces or units?
No, no, it is, it is spaces.
What does that mean? Is that beds?
Well, it's not defined in the code. We have taken the position that it is a unit. The Island Company originally took the position, really, that it's just a cot, and that's not, that's not a space.
It's not a habbo.
That's not a habbo unit. And so...
It's not dignified.
Right. And so the, the end result was, they would have, if everything was, was permitted, going into the process with this Descanso Beach, they would have 19 units credit, in terms of, when we looked at that. However, of those 19 units, 13 of them, we have questions about as to whether they're valid units or not. And so we have to do additional work to determine if those units have been permitted, if they're allowed under the code. And the Descanso Beach project would require six units, and that would exhaust their credit. So anything further, they would have to, you know, provide additional rental space. But we're going to, now that we've determined what the number is, now we're going into looking at that, those spaces, to make certain that it's property permitted, as well as the municipal code requires that it be affordable. And there's a formula established by state law that determines whether it's affordable or not. And if it's not affordable, it doesn't count as one of those spaces. So we've got the number of units. Now it's just a process of going through and seeing if those units really qualify. And if not, that means that they have to provide more spaces before they can open that project.
You mean, so, you mean, you're talking about before they could go ahead and occupy the building?
Before they can, before they can open the...
Before they get an occupancy.
Yes, yes.
So that's before they build this, they have to come up with the housing?
No, no. The planning commission, the planning commission is one of the conditions, that the planning commission decided, they had the option of requiring the additional work to be done in terms of the analysis, can be done before construction or before occupancy. Planning commission determined it would be before occupancy.
The planning commission came up with that idea?
Yes. That was their determination at the meeting yesterday. They had the option, and that's the one they chose.
I'm concerned, and the public is concerned, about the spaces that are considered housing units, if they're not just putting more beds in a, in a room. So we've got to make sure that...
That doesn't count. And the Island Company in their, in the, in the determination, the Island Company did not count cots or beds or, you know, that, that was not part of... They did not get credit. For instance, if they put six cots in a room, they still only got one unit credit.
Okay.
They don't get six.
So the whole point, I bring this up, is it, we've had, let's see, the museum, St. Catherine's, the zip line, Vons, the, all these places that are going up, and there's not one more housing unit in town. So that's where we're getting to the bottom line of that, where, how are we growing so out of the ordinary here, that we can continue to make big businesses, but there's no place for anybody to sleep, and no place for anybody to sit down and relax and take a shower and have a dignified, affordable house? So that's where I, I'm glad Cindy brought that affordable housing up, because that's something that we need, for every project that goes forward, we should, from now on, we should be having them improve the infrastructure, improve and expand our, somehow contribute to expanding our water sources, our electrical grid, our trash in refuse area and recycling programs, and things like sewer treatment plant. Those things all need to be considered every time someone builds something. So I, going into the future, I want to grow the city wisely from now on and not say that, well, we have these credits left. Okay, if they do, let's legitimately get beyond this. But from what I'm getting, I'm gathering information from my constituents, advisors, and they're saying that this, this, these housing credits are made up. I don't know. That's why we have you people, the experts, looking into this and trying to figure it out legitimately, because we're getting into a housing crisis now.
And if I can just add two things in response to that. One, the development fees that we will, going out to RFP, those will establish fees for...
For the infrastructure.
For new units. And it's not just what is on site, but it's also the downstream impacts. For instance, if we have to increase our sewage lines down on Front Street, because there's going to be more effluent going, that's going to be a cost that the developer's going to have to bear, and it's not going to be spread among existing residents. That's the purpose of that development fee. Until then, if anything comes up, our municipal code allows us to tack on those, those impact fees on a project-by-project basis through a development agreement. The second thing is, it was mentioned at the last meeting that I was not here, that we are in the process of totally revising the affordable housing ordinance to make it up to date and compliance with state law. Elizabeth Hall is tackling that. And so that will come back to you as an additional tool for the council to make certain that developers and new developments provide housing for employees. So again, that's coming to you.
Mayor?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, councilman.
Go ahead.
In regard to those units that councilmember Sampson referenced, or the allegation that there are units that are being occupied by more people than code permits, or where there have been additions, each and every one of those units will now have to be inspected to determine, by our staff, to determine if they meet the required habitation requirements as units, that they are safe. No one wants to go through what I had happen in the first city I was in, where some people were in housing just outside the city, that they ended up, because of noncompliance with being killed from gas asphyxiation. And I, and so we're very, our staff is very sensitive to that. We'll make sure that each unit is legal, that it's safe. If it needs sprinkler systems, if that was the requirement, then we'll certainly see that that is done. And I think the company understands that, their upper management understands that, and so, and we will keep you posted on that, also, councilmembers.
Okay.
I'm so sorry, Joe. Before we lose that train of thought, can I, let me just think out loud here for a second. So if, if, if a unit is, doesn't matter who owns a unit, whether it's Island Company or anybody else for that matter, but is a, in order for it to be considered part of the Affordable Housing Bank, it has to have sprinkler systems? That's, did I hear that correctly?
I think if it's subdivided, if the house is...
It's a change of usage, I think, is what triggers off the sprinkler.
If they added a wall or something like that, or whatever.
Right. Or duplex.
Yeah, which is 25% instead of 50. But there's certain things that trigger it off, and airspace.
So say, for example, that, over the last years or so, the conservancy has purchased some homes in town in order to make sure that their employees have housing. If, if those cottages or whatnot that they've purchased don't have sprinklers, would they be required to put sprinklers in those homes in order to be, to have those considered?
Only if the code required that that occupancy, or there were modifications. And I know Mr. Hernandez is probably more versed than I am in this, just to say that, though, if there's any conversion or any change in, in the footprint of the house, or if there's, that it could trigger that. But the, but the affordability, as I understand it, and if I recall correctly, relates to that a person should not spend more than 30% of their income for, toward housing, and affordable would be making, that housing, so that it doesn't, so that they're not spending more than 30%, that's the HUD standard, more than 30% of their income for, for rent. That's, that's the standard.
And it's based upon the median income for Los Angeles County, and so Elizabeth Hall has all those, I went over those. It's a whole formula, and it's just basically, you plug it in, and then that sets the maximum... you plug it in, and then that sets the maximum rent that they could charge for that unit.
So, okay. So, how did we get to this point? Why are we having a special meeting just for one company to push a thing, item through things? Where ordinance clearly states, we can't have meetings in December and November. And now, we have one thing on the agenda yesterday. I mean, it just doesn't, I mean, it just doesn't sound right. It looks like we're doing somebody a special favor. I mean, it just, that's what's sending up flags about this whole discussion. It just doesn't sound right.
Okay. And if you, council recall, in October, this issue came before the council. And the council said, we will make an exception to this rule. And they set the meeting, and then what happened was, the meeting that it was set to did not have a quorum. And then, so, they just, they reset the meeting when they had a quorum.
They didn't have a quorum for the planning commission.
For the planning commission, yeah. Yeah. And so, and part of it, that reason is, we have two planning commissioners with conflicts. We have a vacancy for the alternative. And then, I think there was two that were not there. So, we didn't have a quorum. So, that's why they, they did it. When can, when can we actually get a quorum?
And there was questions asked within the council too, about inclusionary housing too. I mean, yeah, we didn't say, bring it back to the council, but there's clearly, some of the council people, persons were interested about the inclusionary housing. But yet, they still went ahead and pushed it before the council meeting. In my opinion, it should have waited till come back to the council, because we did have some interest in that. Instead of pushing it forward before we get to it, so they could get it for the first of the year. That's just my opinion.
And I understand that, and we watched the videotape of the council action on that. And the council action was, they can go ahead and have the hearing, and then report back to the council.
It was a two to three, it was a one to two vote? It was only three people that voted on that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I think, yeah.
Wouldn't their planning commission meeting generally have been tomorrow? Isn't it usually the third Wednesday of the month?
They usually don't have.
No, they usually don't have a, they usually don't have a, the planning commission meeting in.
In the city ordinance, right?
Right. And then, so, it was a matter, well.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying, but yet, we did.
I mean, I guess, and the other thing is, okay, to say we want an audit, but the assumption is, when you get an audit, the findings are solid and done, and it's agreed upon. Now, to say that we agreed, when already we're saying, we're still looking at it, there was an, there was not an agreement, unless you consider whoever worked with Amanda to be the final say. And maybe that should have been how it is, but, but we're still in this next step of, we're still talking about it. So, it's not, it's not quite right.
I understand. And again, our interpretation of what the direction was, was, the audit was to determine the exact number of units, when you looked at the employees and the number of units created. We came about that number, it's 19. Now, the issue is, are any of those 19 illegal units? Or were they not permitted? And that's what we're doing now. Regardless, the project, just like the Vons project, has a condition in it that they have to provide housing for any additional employees. It's a condition. And for this one here.
After the fact, though? After the fact?
It's always, it's always the case, because.
Okay. So, after, if they open the store up, and then they find.
No, no. Okay. It is before the store opens. Okay. We're going to have the number of employees that they're going to employ by the store. And the way that works is, you take people from the two locations, and put them together. And if they're additional employees, they have to provide additional housing. If there's not additional employees, no housing. And then, we have checkups to make certain that in a year from now, they haven't snuck in 10 employees. And if they did that, they'd have to provide the five, under the current ordinance, rental spaces. We'll clear up that language going forward. But it's a continuing requirement.
And to say though, just, but just, because I can afford to go out and rent a hotel for all of my people.
Doesn't.
Is that right, when the lease currently is a short, is a 14-month lease?
That's what the ordinance allows. And so, we're going to clean that up.
Yeah, that definitely.
I mean, we can only work with what the ordinance says. And so, the ordinance needs cleaned up, and we're cleaning it up.
But let me, let me just offer this as just a thought, that I think in deference to the staff who did the work and worked on this, they thought they had arrived based on information they received that was, that was accurate. Subsequent to that, there was other information that was received more recently, that suggested the things that Mayor and other council members are raising, about whether people were put into units that were not legal. There was a question that if you have, you say that you're providing units, but it's only for 14 months more, is that really providing units? And I think, I think just a basic reading, that is not. And so, we have to now address that, because that issue now has been raised, and we'll address it, and as we should.
Well, that just means that when those 14 months are up, there's going to be a deficit of units now, that they're going to owe us, you know. So, I.
It is a continuing obligation. They cannot do it just, you know, once. They have to. And right now, the way the ordinance reads is, they can put people in hotels, in their own hotels, and that counts as affordable rental space, assuming that the, that the rent is affordable. And so, that's one of the things that when we come back to you with the new inclusive housing ordinance, that will be addressed.
Let me just say this, if I may, Mayor, that, in that, as the city attorney said, that the current ordinance allows you to place in people in units, people in rental units, or what would otherwise be rental apartments or buildings. But state law also says that the city is obligated to do everything it can to provide residents on a basis for all income groups, and that affordable housing, that the depletion of affordable housing is a matter of statewide importance. That's what says, that's the statement essentially in the housing element, requirements in state law. So, providing 14 months or two years, and then people are, I don't know, thrown out, or, I'm not suggesting that would happen. But then, then that, as the city attorney says, that obligation resumes. It comes back again, because the housing has not been met. And that's something that we will address, and have to address, because, for the reasons you've stated.
And a lot of this is really going to be, you know, code enforcement issues, because all these things are conditions of approval for projects. And it's a matter of following through with those conditions, and making certain that the developers or anyone has complied with that. And that is what code enforcement does.
Okay. My last item is.
It'd be planning, no?
Well, planning is, that's, code enforcement is the enforcement tool.
Right.
Of the planning, in terms of, you know, you go out and you inspect it. I'm using the broad.
I get it, I get it.
Term. And one of the things we have is, we knew, we now, for the council action about a year ago, we have a procedure where we can do administrative citations, civil citations, which are, rather than go to court criminally, we can issue fines for people on the spot. Staff can do that, if there are code violations, in order to beef up residents and businesses' compliance with conditions of approval.
Okay. Last item. Vons did have a conversation, as I announced last meeting, with this new public affairs department from Vons. And I'm still apprehensive about how compliant they're going to be with our conditions of approval for the store. But what we're trying, what I'm trying to organize right now, since the CISA members are being represented by council, they can't individually talk and negotiate with Vons about the windows, to begin with. Just, so, what I'm understanding is, they're represented by council, there's the Vons people, and there is the city council member who wants to make sure that the conditions of approval are met, as I specified during the meetings that we had, or the last meeting that we had, that we approved that project. So, I'm trying to get together these three factions, so that we can have a conversation together publicly, again, so I can understand exactly what Vons is feeding the CISA people, and what they're saying that they're going to do for them. Because it's pretty simple. There's only 11 people, maybe a couple more, 11 homeowners, maybe a few more in that area, that would like their windows replaced. And Vons is beginning to say that they're not going to do it for commercial buildings, which I don't think I remember that conversation going on. So, the next step is to have a meeting between CISA members, CISA council, Vons representatives, and myself, and maybe, if, myself, I'm just going to commit myself for now. And if somebody else would like to join in on that, that's fine, that has something to do with that. They can help us come to a conclusion on this and get this thing going. Because their time is running out, it's running right now. The clock is running, and they're not doing anything. And they are, they're in no rush to do anything. And I'm just saying, I'm moving this forward as swiftly as I can. And that's it. Oh, I want to say one other thing. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody. Feliz Navidad, Happy Kwanzaa, and everything, whatever you believe in, God bless you, and enjoy your holiday season. And be safe, and may all your, the desires of your heart be fulfilled. Thank you very much.
I just want, I just want to, the same lines on this work, or this presentation for my son. I just want to enlighten you that there are two other kids from Avalon that are also on the San Francisco Police Department. And kind of steered my son in that direction, and that's how he got up there. Ozzy Campos, and Alejandro Campos. So, we've got three kids from Avalon walking the streets of San Francisco.
That's incredible.
Kudos to them, okay? Just wanted to pass that on.
That's lovely.
Okay.
Okay. The nuisance abatement at the new Vons site, is that moving forward, that's turned into, and I'm sure Doug Federal can attest to it, that's turned into a little flop house out there. And I know you all are watching it, but.
The property owner has the duty and the responsibility to secure the premises. That's number A. And they've been told, if that means that they have to put security there, if they have to board it up, if they have to put security and board it up, they've been told that they, that is their responsibility as a property owner, as any property owner would. I understand that there's one condition, in order to, in order to tear it down, there's a condition. And by the way, Ms. Cook is not here because of her husband, who's in the, anyway, off island. And so, that there was one condition to meet, and as soon as that condition was met, that they can then demolish it, not start construction on Vons, but simply demolish that. And the property has, as was reported, changed hands. It is not owned by the Island Company. We've seen the deed. It is owned by Vons. So, it is their responsibility to make sure that that property is secure. And as soon as they meet whatever that condition is, that I don't remember, that that can be demolished to take care of the abatement. And absent that, then we have a duty, if there is a nuisance, a public nuisance, to take action, should it not be taken.
And so, what's the timeline on that? Because it is a public nuisance.
Yeah. The property owner has the duty and the responsibility to make sure that that property is secure. That is their duty and responsibility. And failure to do so, so, I will check tomorrow and find out what, where that is in that process. Yes, yes, Mayor.
What is this nuisance?
The Vons thing, that the old Wilcox nursery thing, people are sleeping in there. And, yeah, it's not good.
And we've had that in the bathroom across the street as well.
Yes, yes.
Chief Craig.
Madam Mayor, council city staff, I just, the, I had a conversation with the Vons representatives last week.
Thank you.
Excuse me. And they went by the property, and they secured some items that were a safety hazard at that property. And they're should be just finishing up the final touches with the contractor to board up the property. It's in the works.
And somebody said there was a freezer there that.
There was. They went by and broke the hinges on that freezer, so, and put it on its side. So, they took care of some hazards that they could mitigate right now. And then, they're just finishing up paperwork with the contractor to board up the property. And hopefully, it's torn down sooner rather than later.
Right, yeah. Thank you. That's fine. Maybe next meeting, we can have an update on the progress on the elevator at Beacon Hill?
Yes, we'd be happy to.
Okay. And that makes a question for you, Chief Craig. So, somebody came out of the hospital and, that lives there, and they were, his buddies helped him get upstairs. When that kind of thing happens, can they call you all in? Is that a free service to help them get to where they need to go?
Sure. We routinely do what we call is a public assist. The only thing that, if we have to physically put them in the ambulance and transport them, then we're obligated to charge a fee for that. But we'll routinely, if somebody just needs a hand, and getting up some stairs or things like that, we're happy to help with that.
Great. That's great to know. Thank you very much. That's awesome. Just wanted to make an announcement. I hope, I don't know if everybody in town got one, but it's time to, getting ready to renew your dog licenses, starting January 1. So, that's a good thing. And then, I have one other question, the status of those flapper valves. Dennis Jaitch. Good evening.
It's funny you should mention it. They started this afternoon.
Cool.
Yeah, it's going to take a while. We've got to play with the tides. We're having some issues with some broken pipe that we're connecting to. We spoke to Mike Flynn today, and he mobilized this afternoon.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. That's good news. Okay. All righty, oral communications. This is an opportunity for people from the community to talk about an item that's not on the agenda. We would like to limit you to three minutes, and no action will be taken.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'll just give a couple quick updates. One, wanted to thank and congratulate at the same time, the article in the paper on the Joe Machado Field opening. Wonderful picture of the mayor as our grand marshal, and a shout out to Councilmember Sampson for singing in the National Anthem. Thank you again for that.
Honored.
And the picture in the form of our soccer player, and our baseball thrower, and our football. Thank you all for that. Great article. And thank you for the support of the Islander on that. Additional support. Spoke with the mayor this morning, and the Avalon Fit Trail is coming to a close here pretty quick, the construction of it. It will be finished most likely by the end of day tomorrow, and that's just specifically across the street. They've got about another week up at Joe Machado Field, so probably towards the end of next week to finish that part of the project. I would like to see us do a opening on Friday morning at 11 o'clock, the 23rd. And I'd love, I'll get a email out to everybody, and we'll get some communication out to the public, but an email out to the council members personally inviting you out. 11 o'clock, we'll have some activities, we'll have some munchies around it. Wanted to celebrate the opening of that. Older kids, everybody's out of school, but 14 and older, which it's appropriate for, out of school. Give the kids another thing that they can do during the holidays, as well as adults that may be interested and asked about it. So, that'll be 11 o'clock on Friday, and I'll get something out as of tomorrow. Tomorrow, we will also be handing out food baskets for the holidays, Christmas dinners, for 43 families. So, combination, it looks like a turkey and some potatoes and some vegetables will go out. We contacted those 43 families today. The gifts that were collected as part of the toy drive is all part of that. So, we're going to be doing that over at the community church downstairs in the teen center. So, you're welcome to come out from four to six, if you want to help pass out those. Staff will be able to do that. And then, the last one, Santa Claus. Got some assistance from the community services staff today, getting the letters out. We had over 100 letters go out to kids that responded. So, we assisted Santa in getting those out along their way yesterday. so we assisted Santa in getting those out along their way yesterday and today, so they should be getting those in the mail, so, a great turnout for that, they got personalized letters in regards to the Dropbox that we had, so, that was it, thank you.
Oh, oh, thank you, and okay, any other communication?
Just to add to a lot of happy notes, I just want to say, I don't know all the people that are involved, but that SS Kenabi is the cutest thing ever, every time I walk by, something new has been added to it, it is the cutest installation ever, and I can't wait to see kids playing on it, it's fantastic.
Thank you very much, awesome. Okay, other communication? Okay, if not, let's go to the consent calendar.
Mayor and council under consent calendar, item one is to approve, excuse me, it's to approve actions from the December 6, 2016 regular city council meeting. Item number two is the expenditure submitted for approval, approve the expenditure amount Item three is a resolution reciting the facts of the November 8, 2016 election, recommendation is to adopt a resolution reciting the results of the Tuesday, November 8, 2016 special municipal, and declaring the results. Item four is Catalina Express Free Birthday Trips Waiver of Warfage Fee, that recommended is to authorize a waiver for not charging the warfage fee for persons who embark and disembark the city of Avalon via the Catalina Express in conjunction with Catalina Express promotion of giving a free birthday trip. Item number five is an emergency repairs to the South Beach Brake Wall, one is to determine an emergency existed and ratify the action, the Public Works Director to undertake necessary repairs on the South Beach Brake Wall, authorize expenditures for repairs to be funded by the General Fund, Account 102-50-75701 in the amount of $10,030.30. And the third action is to adopt a resolution authorizing necessary repairs, a four-fifths vote because it is an urgency matter is required. Six is to purchase materials for sewer, salt water system, recommended approve expenditure not to exceed $12,000 for the purchase of materials for the sewer and salt water system maintenance. Waterside permit, and there is a correction, I believe, the chief on the waterside, excuse me, the harbor master, waterside permit modification application Catalina Adventure Sailings, no, there's not on this one, it's make the, an affirmative finding that conditions set forth in the Avalon Municipal Code have been met and grant the waterside project application modification of adding a backup vessel that will not require additional dock times to Catalina Adventure Sailings Waterside Permit. Item number 217 is the, there, I believe the harbor master will mention a correction, it's to 2017 Waterside Permit Renewals, and there's a number of recommended actions, including recommending items one through five in your agenda. And the harbor ma, do you want to clarify, would it be appropriate for him to clarify with the addition in this?
If he'd like to, sure.
I'm actually going to pull that item, so if you want to, if you, if it makes sense to hold off, then...
Thank you, thank you. Item number nine is the authorization of bid for the 2016 Global Capital Improvement Program, RFP, and the recommendation is to authorize the award of a contract, the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Colick and Sons LP for 2016 and 2017 Global Capital Improvement Programs, for an amount not to exceed $2,377,752, plus a 15% allowance for change orders. Item number 10 is City Freshwater Master Plan, it's a recommendation to approve a request to the Planning Commission to review and comment on a proposed amendment to the city's 2013 general plan to require a freshwater master plan for the city of Avalon in collaboration with officials of the city of Avalon. Item number 11 is to, is an extension to contract for temporary underwater sculptures installed in the Casino Drive Dive Park, the recommended action is to approve an extension to the agreement with the Parley Foundation for the underwater sculptures, and authorize city manager to sign same. Item number 12 is the Casino Dock Restaurant Lease, there has been a request by the, by the lessee, or the potential lessee to hold this matter over. That's it.
Welcome, Ms. Ratty.
That's it. Welcome back, Denise. She was probably watching us at home, going, oh my god, I better get my butt down there.
I just want to pass, Madam Mayor, with Ms. Ratty, I want to make sure.
You did a fine job.
I think there was one item, Mayor, that was requested to be pulled on the consent.
Well, there's more than one, well, let's see what we all got. Okay, what's the pleasure of council?
So 12's out?
12's out.
12's out.
Could I, could I just ask staff two quick questions on 12?
Yes.
I was under the impression that the term that we had agreed on was a 15-year and two five-year extensions?
Correct.
Okay, so in here it says, terms 15, the term for their lease is written as 15, a 10, and a 5.
Correct.
But we had agreed to a 15-year and two five extensions.
Correct.
So they're asking for an additional 5.
Because the cost of the building is now estimated based on, to be 600,000, not 500, and what they were asking is for the term of the lease to correspond with the term of the debt of payback of 600,000, the bid itself is 600, in checking with the Public Works, that, that is, that is probably, in fact, what it would cost, but those, that's a matter that ultimately you will decide whether that's reasonable or not reasonable when we bring it back to you.
Okay, and then the next clarification I would just like to see is on item number six, the amount of leased space, it states here the lessee will be leasing interior and exterior space of approximately 2,000 square feet, should additional substantive leased space be needed or requested, additional costs would be incurred, so I'd just like to define what substantive means.
Well, it is actually the motion that the council made, there was a caveat made at the motion on October 4th or 6th, I believe, that all of you spoke of, of what is, what was substantial, and I think the conversation had something, because I went back and, a couple times, and Ms. Ratty and I, we did, looked at the tapes, and it had to talk about if it was 2,050 feet, that then the 4,008% wouldn't matter, but if it was 2,500 feet, then that would be, that would have to come back to you for, and what we'll hope to have, we will have by the next meeting is actually the footprint itself, so that, so that you can have...
Okay, that would be great, and I wanted to bring these points up now, even though the item's being pulled.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to clarify in the lease agreement, what we as a council agree is substantive, because what we say today and what may happen 25 years from now may be different.
Absolutely.
So, the, that, the term, and if that's, if we said substantive, I know that I would have been under the impression that we would have said something, that a cap on what that would be before it would come back, but it is only fair that a lessee pays for the space that they're leasing, so...
I don't disagree with you at all, I thank you for that clarification.
Well, and, and to that, I would, okay, you might want that for additional, but I would, I thought that substantive number would have been made now, because my thing was, because when, when they negotiated, gave them some kind of free space, I was, wanted that to be now, not future, because that's a totally different thing, asking for something in the future, like they say we want to put that ramp, you know, get rid of that ramp, and, so that's that space, but I'm talking current, again, it says approximately 2,000 square feet, if that's the number at $2.17, you know, is that $4,000 figure, roughly?
Right, it's actually, yes, actually, I think the number in the previous lease was 1,856 square feet, I believe, but, but, but what we'll do, and with the great questions that both of you, council member, Mayor, is asking, is we'll bring you back the specific footprint as we can get on and measure, we apologize for not doing that.
Okay.
Okay, and, and I'm going to kind of piggyback on your, on item two as well, because we did say the 25, and they seemed, they seemed to be in alignment with that then, but now it's changed, and I guess the only, the only thing that I, you know, I was thinking, oh, you know, it's a 30, you know, 30-year lease, and, the thing is when you go, and a 30-year loan, the thing is when you buy a house, most people buy a house on a 30-year loan, but you sell your house and you pay off the loan.
Correct.
So, if you're five years into it, you pay off the loan, I'm assuming, so, so I'm, so I think that item two needs more...
Well, that's what I was saying, is, is I want to make sure that, that we, I want to point it out, and we as a council discuss it, because we have gone back and forth many times, and that is what we had agreed on.
And if that's going to hold it up now, that would be a shame.
Yeah.
Let me, if I may, just mention, with your permission, Madam Mayor, once the building is built, the building is built, both the shell and the interior, upon that completion of that building, it becomes property of the city, not the, not the lessees.
Does that include all equipment inside as well?
There is a possessory interest, any fixed asset in the building is, is, is your, is the city's, any movable item, I guess, is, is, is a possessory interest. The debt, however, is, if, the debt, however, is theirs, so whatever that, so that'll be for however the length of the loan, and so that was, I think, and that'll be something that I'll develop with, with you, and you can decide if that's appropriate.
Okay, so 12 is pulled, okay. What else are we pulling?
I pulled eight, please.
Eight, item eight. Item 12.
I pulled, I just want to make a comment on item four, which is the Catalina Express birthday thing, Mr. Bombard called me, and maybe he spoke to some of you, it's going to change up a little bit this year, it's going to be two-for-one, so, you will bring, if you bring a guest, you bring a guest with you, and the birthday person writes free, and the other person pays, and, but it also, though, for residents, we will get the birthday pass, we don't need to take somebody with us, so, I believe Mr. Federal had had a comment with Mr. Bombard on that, on the program, and you thought that was a good idea as well, is that true?
Wake up!
I'm sorry.
Not giving free rides to the bums on the express on the birthday.
Okay, now, okay, so, Mr. Bombard said that he had spoken to you about the new, it's two, two-for-one basically, coming on the birthday, and that'll keep the, the single people that come over, and that was something you felt would be helpful as well?
Yeah, we had a round of conversations.
It's okay, he said yes.
He said yes.
Okay, so that's all I wanted to say on number four. Okay, and, and number 10, do we want to pull number 10 as well?
Yeah, can we pull that, 10, yeah.
Okay, so right now we got four and 10 pulled, no, we got eight and 10. Keep, keep track, Ole, you're good at this. Okay, anything else?
Move staff on eight, 10, and 12, or eight, 10, and 12, and LeBron.
What?
Move staff on everything but eight and...
Wait, one more question, though.
Sorry.
But let me ask one more question.
Go for it.
To the harbor master.
Yes.
Hi, so on, on item 11, on the, you were asking for additional securing of the, of the stuff to off, you know, to give to Parley Foundation, was that, did you discuss that, and that's something that agreed upon?
They agreed upon it this morning.
Okay, that, okay, just wanted to make sure we weren't...
Including paying our fees, even better.
Okay.
Even better.
Move staff on one to seven, nine, and 11.
Second, comments from the community, call for the vote?
Where we at?
I'm not hooked up.
Not hooked up.
Voice, raise your hands, all eyes.
Thank you.
Cindy might have blown it up.
Okay, item number 10.
Eight.
Eight.
Well, I had 10 in front of me, so we'll start with eight. Okay, item number, eight, oh, who pulled that one?
I did.
Okay, go, Cindy, go.
My questions are on number, the recommended actions are obviously to approve the waterside permits except for items two, three, four, and five. So, on items two and three, we're asking to approve the renewal of Scotty Sport Fishing and Fishing Fanatics, provided that they, their outstanding harbor use fee reports for September and October are filed and paid by February 1st of 2017. So, my first question is, why are we not including November in there as well, since we're already, have they, have each of them turned in their November reports?
When I wrote this staff report, November wasn't due yet, it's not due until December 30th.
Oh, okay.
Since I've written this staff report, Fishing Fanatics has paid all their fees and turned in their reports, and Action Flyboarding has paid all their fees and turned in their reports, Scotty's Sport Fishing, he's out of town and hasn't replied.
Okay, so that eliminates number three then, so then, Action Flyboarding, I want to point out that this is a new permit this year, and I find it very concerning that a new permit hasn't turned in reports, especially from July forward.
My, that was my concern too, but if you look through their agreement that they have with Island Navigation, she was under the impression that Island Navigation or Island Enterprises would be paying the 7%, but actually, Island Enterprises was just paying the 7% of the profit that they made off the ticket, and then Belinda Bain would be paying the 7% of the profit that she was pulling in from the ticket.
Okay, but she's up to date now.
She's up to date, she FedExed it the next day when we called.
Okay, great, and then on number five, what's missing? It says only if the required documents are supplied.
They got their business license, they posted their $1,000 use fee deposit, their insurance, there is an issue with the corporation that they were trying to run the business with, doesn't have a permit to do business within the state of California, so they have an, a insurance issue, and as soon as the attorney that we've been working with in California, and the attorney we've been working with in Florida where they're incorporated, can get their stuff together, they can start.
But they haven't started actually, oh, okay, okay, so as long as they haven't been transacting business? Okay, that's all I have.
One more thing that I've got is, I neglected on my list for the 2016 permities, I neglected to put Catalina Classic Cruises on there as the tendering operation.
So, I guess if there are no other questions, other than, than the few I had, I would make a motion to approve items one through five for the harbor master, renewing the attached list of waterside permits for the year 2017, with the exceptions listed in two, three, four, and five, and those that have been already taken care of, to include those in the list, and also adding the Catalina Classic Cruises.
Perfect, is there a second?
Second.
Conversation? And, all eyes, raise your hand for eyes, your right hand.
Right hand, I'm sorry. Missed that memo.
Item 10, okay. Hi, Anders, okay, the council should ask the Planning Commission to review the following recommendations to be made part of the general plan through the amended process, the city of Avalon should require that its freshwater provider to develop a water master plan that will describe a 5, 10, or 20-year goal to provide a sustainable year-round freshwater supply to Avalon, the city's water utility will coordinate development, so, so, how does that, I'm just trying to say, how does that work, is that a, and then, and then they say, because if we do that by ordinance, they, or, they would have, how does that work, so they would have to versus don't have to?
The general plan of the ci, excuse me, if I may, Madam Mayor, the general plan of the city is the overall plan, if you will, for developments, the constitution of development under California law, case law, there's NAPA case and others, city attorney can recite those, it also, a plan in itself... law, there's NAPA case and others. City Attorney can recite those. It also, a plan in itself is just that, a plan, to the extent that it's general. What the, what the conservation element of the general plan talks about are policies that implement the, the general provisions of the, of, of the general plan. And the, and the Avalon general plan says that, that, that there should be a long, achieve effective long-term management of water resources so that demand is in balance with efficient, sustainable supplies, and, this is quote, quoting, "provide a safe and adequate water supply that effectively meets the demand for the existing and future population." All water agencies, of which I'm familiar, have a master plan that defines what improvements are needed, what improvements will be made, what the cost of those improvements are, and what the timeframe is for, for creating that sustainable year-round water supply as it's applied here. And what, we, we're not asking you to approve that tonight, but simply to ask the planning commission to review that provision, invite in our, our friends at SCE and have a discussion with them. And I think it's arguable that under our, under our police powers, under the state consti, not the police department, but although that would be, that would be an interesting addition, that under our police powers that, that we can encourage that formation of a, and, and, and it really follows in the spirit that Edison itself has been talking to us about developing its plans, they've hired an expert. Well, now let's put this to paper so that everyone's going to know what the costs are. And also, I think what it does is by doing this pre-planning and identifying on a year, annual basis, it helps us when we go for grants because we can say we're going to do this piece and this piece. So that's, that's the logic.
Yeah, good. I'm, thank you. Explain that to people out there. Okay, item 10.
One of the questions that I had on this was, I think having a plan is a really good idea and I, and, and I want us to work together with Edison to do, to, to figure out what they already have in place. And I know they have a bunch of different components, as I've already spoke to. And they have a bunch of different smaller plans, but not one overall arching plan for the city of Avalon specifically. But I'm still stuck on, how do you plan for a 20-year goal of sustainable freshwater when we don't have our growth plan in place? We don't know what we're going to grow to. We don't know how many more dwelling units. We don't know how many more people in town. So, so I'm confused about that. And, you know, we go back to, Joe and I have both spoke about this over the last three years, that, you know, 30 years ago, we had half as many residents in town that we have now and half as many visitors. And our, you know, freshwater resources have, have changed very little since then, except for this additional D cell unit that we've, that we've just been part of over the last two year, year and a half as, as this particular council. So if we, and we talked a little bit about it in our goal setting, and we've talked about it in a couple council meetings in the last couple months as well, that, you know, we as a, a city need to determine what our growth is and then take that information to our water provider to say, this is where we see ourselves in 20 years and we want you to gear a plan around that.
The general plan, if I may, the general plan itself sets the boundaries of your growth. It sets it in a number of policies that are not always as specific, but, so, so the, the planning should, in, in, in a near term, a water agency should have knowledge what it's going to be doing in the next five years or 10, now as it moves out, it gets less and less specific because of the factors within that growth limit that the general plan sets. It, 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 it is less specific. But, but that plan is generally updated every five years as new information is available. But, but any, any agency, whether it's a water or sewer provider, we should likewise have a sewer master plan that discusses the same topics. We don't control the, the water system, or it's not under our jurisdiction per se. But we think this would be a good planning tool for them, for us. And I think really too, it would help us a lot in our search for grants to define that, here's our plan, here's our system, it's already gone through the broader environmental review. So, but in the end, as, as we go forward with the plan, as we go forward in time, it'll be refined within five-year, generally five-to-six-year increments.
And maybe the city attorney has some comments on that.
To, to the extent that we can encourage Edison, the state statute governs the process and there are public hearings, there's input from the stakeholders and, and the city being the major stakeholders, and the development of this plan, which then comes back and has to be redone every five years. And so the purpose of this is to have a tool by which the city can encourage Edison to follow the state plan and model something that we'd like to see for ourselves, our own planning purposes, following the state regulations, which will include looking at the general plan. If everything went well, what could you produce? What's your plan for meeting the general plan build-out? And then rationing it down to every five years, what do we think is realistic for the next five years?
Well, and at the same time, we should include the water recycling, water reclamation in here because the demand that we would be putting on the freshwater provider, their need to grow might be different.
Right.
With the reclaim.
You make a very good point, Madam Mayor.
So that needs to be dovetailed in.
That's my next point.
And then.
That was good.
And then when we get.
Agreed.
About 100 million gallons from Medgar.
And I, I did, I actually reached out to Edison earlier this week and I did get a response that they have invited AWE and its higher-ups, and they'll be meeting with Edison the first part of, or early in January and look at the overall system. And they'll also be meeting with the island company as well.
Yeah, I know, that's wonderful.
And the conservancy. So that's good news.
Nice. And, and at your request, we had, we had invited all those parties at the council's request. And as the council member Cassidy said, actually was a very great response. Everyone's, as, it seems interested, island company, conservancy, Edison, we were glad to hear that they're interested. And so it's exciting that.
It is. And the public that's, that heard us talking about that, they're pretty excited too. So anyway, so, I'll make a motion to approve regrets to the planning commission to review and comment on a proposed amendment in the city's 2013 general plan to require a freshwater master plan for the city of Avalon.
I'll second it.
Further comments?
Ole? No, I'm just voting.
All eyes.
Thank you.
Okay, item, now item 13.
So item number 13 is a two ordinances, an urgency ordinance and a regular ordinance. This is brought to the council at the council direction from the last meeting. The reason that there are two ordinances, they're the identical, except an urgency ordinance requires four votes to be effective immediately upon passage. A regular ordinance is three votes and has a second reading. So you, if you, the council's direction was to, you only have three votes to pass something, you'd have a first reading today, a second reading in January, and then it would go into, whatever rule you adopt would go into effect 30 days after the, the second meeting, so mid-February. Let me just briefly describe what the proposed ordinance does. First, it expands the width for low-speed vehicles by five inches to accommodate new, new technology. Second, it does not allow the, the hybrid cars or the, they're not autoettes, but the cars with the doors to park in the angled parking spaces because when you open the door, there's just not enough room. The third thing that the ordinance does is a previous direction from the council, the council may recall about six months ago, you gave us direction to deal with the situation where someone has an oversized vehicle and that vehicle is replaced. And lo and behold, they have a vehicle that's even bigger than the one that they had the oversized permit for. And so this ordinance at the council's direction says, if you have an oversized permit and you get a replacement vehicle, you can't be larger than the one you already have. It's got to be the same size or smaller. Does provide a, a procedure for going through the hearing officer if, if they really want to beg for something larger, but it's strongly discouraged. And then the last one, and probably the most interesting, is that it looks at autoettes and provides that there'll be no new autoettes in the city, where you establish a kind of a waiting list, and that for every autoette that goes off, then a new one comes on, it's much like you do for regular-sized vehicles. And so pursuant to the council direction, we put that together. It is in one ordinance, but if you don't like parts of the ordinance, I've got a pen, okay? And we can cross out full sections and still go forward. For instance, if you had agreement on two of the three or three of the four, we can, I can just cross it out and you could go forward, or we can not go forward on anything, or you can vote for the whole ordinance. It's up to the council. You have options here. Again, council direction, we did what we were asked. We watched the videotape. I did call, or our office did call Mayor Portem Olson to make certain that on this oversized vehicle thing that he had requested, that it was okay to put it in this ordinance, because that was previous direction and we had been waiting on that. And so with that, open it to questions and/or public comment.
I, I want us to kind of start with ourselves for just a moment, to just see kind of which way we're going. And then you, if that's okay, and then we'll go from there. So do we want to, we want to tackle, okay?
I think even before me, so you ask your questions, because we did receive those in email as well.
Anything different?
Excuse me one moment. I, I think it might be beneficial if, Councilmember Olson, Ole, if you can help explain, so we're all clear before we, we start, what this really means, what this particular portion of the one-on-one-off, because I've had so many phone calls and I think even I might be confused. So before I could even answer your question, Annie, I think I even need a little bit of clarification.
Sure.
Okay. The, the purpose, the way it's phrased this evening is, A, by time. Some of us don't remember what happened back in the 70s when we went from 800 vehicles to controlling vehicles in Avalon, and in 45 days, we went from 800 to over 1,100 vehicles. And I notice there have been some new green stickers in town for cars that have been coming in, and we're trying to just close the floodgates by the council's time to seriously discuss all of the vehicle issues in town. And that's the purpose of this, is this is, can be changed at the next council meeting. But we need to have a, I think the ability to take a step back, take a deep breath and look at vehicles, look at parking, look at transportation, circulation through town, look at size, look at all this kind of stuff. I think it's always in my contention that we don't really have a vehicle problem per se. I mean, we haven't had a lot of traffic jams downtown. I've seen worse stuff on the 405, but I've seen a lot of parking issues downtown where that you can't find, if you go on a go-to-mann, you can't find a place to park. I know that we have posted parking times downtown. I think we do a fairly good job of enforcing that, but I think there's, there could probably even be a better job there if we enforce downtown parking. And we enforce some neighborhoods that have saturated parking, like some of the flats, Whitley, those you have opportunities for regional parking, for neighborhood parking stickers, so that we could just control, I think parking is a big issue. And what this does is buys us time to explore all the options and we can have a formalized parking plan come out in the next 60 or 90 days.
Are you serious?
Well, if, if, if we do this, it gets.
I'm sorry.
It puts the emphasis upon us to get our butts in gear, because we've been talking about this for four years. Or, I've been here for four and a half years and we talk about it for four and a half years. And we've never gotten anyplace. I think we've got to get us motivated to really seriously address the issue.
It hasn't been done in 20 years.
Right.
It hasn't. It's been piecemeal.
Okay. And, and really, nothing has been done, other than expanding the size of things. I understand where you're coming from. I would like to say I don't agree.
What did you say?
I don't agree with, with having a moratorium for 60 or 90 days, because I think the issue is, is, I think there are some, you could call it piecemeal. But the first issue before us today is, is the current smart cars. So by putting a moratorium for 60 or 90 days or whenever you get it done, number one, those leases are up on those vehicles. Those people, because Mercedes says when, when the extension is done, the extension is done, they go home. They have to go home. So these people will be without a vehicle.
No, no. They can replace it.
No, because we haven't approved the bigger vehicle.
No. Part of, part of this whole ordinance is to approve the larger vehicle.
Exactly.
I know that is one. So I'm saying, let's, let, I'd like to take the, pick the little cherries first and then, because, because those are the calls that a lot of us are getting, are these people that are going to be without a vehicle when, when Mercedes takes them back. So I would like us to kind of, because I don't think, in my mind, this isn't going to fly in my vote exactly like this. So I would like to say where we may have consensus on, so we don't, so we can say, okay, we like this one, maybe we don't like this one. And I think that's the easiest, that's the easiest one to start.
It's not supposed to be easy. It's, we've been taking the easy path for the last 20 years. Let's bite the bullet and do it the right way.
Okay, but this, okay, but whereas, okay, this is, this is the first part of it, is that it's on there, whereas, and it talks about the 4.55. So I'm saying, let's take that first and see if we agree on that one. Because I have a comment about that as well. Because unless you just want to make a motion on a moratorium and then we go back and hit the other ones, I don't care which way you want to do it. But the Scion IQ is one inch wider than, one inch wider than the 4.5, than the five, the 4.55. So, and that is a four-passenger vehicle. And I know some of the, the people say, well, you know, we want a vehicle, we got a family of four and we can't, you know, what are we going to do with two? So I think if that's the case, and it's no different than Toyota comes out with a longer wheelbase and what do you do? And we all said, well, Toyota's a great car. You can work on them here. So you did that years ago.
But isn't that one longer?
That's a longer.
120 inches.
Yes.
So it's like 11.
But I'm saying, we've, we've adjusted.
11 inches longer.
Yeah.
But it's on, it still is under the 120-inch ordinance, so it's still legal.
Yeah.
It's four-seater. It's just a little bit wider.
Right. So, so I guess my, my point is that I would like to see, if it's, we're just going to put in 4.55, I think we need to go six inches so that we can cover something else out there than just the.
Okay.
Just the smart car. And Jordan and I took the new car and the old car, and we went down on Front Street, I mean, on Metropole, we went down, yeah. And we opened those doors up, and we went on Metropole and opened our doors. And it, it is, it isn't any more of a problem than it is when you go over town. I mean, you open up the door, it was interesting, when I pulled up all the way to the curb and, and, and I wasn't at first, and Jordan was all the way to the curb, when I pulled up all the way to the curb, the door, the door opened a lot better. And I think it's just like anything else. And if it turns out if it's really a pain, which I don't think it will be, then, then you park somewhere else.
We're not, we're not over town, so you need to park somewhere else. Because I saw how wide that was and it was, it was tight. Those, those spaces were devised for, for golf carts, and there's going to be more of them. There's going to be more on Sumner Street. And we need to make new, new improved decisions about, if we're going to have new vehicles, we need to make new decisions about parking, because the parking has already been established for golf carts in this town. The, the width of those diagonal spaces and then the spaces by the tuna club, those are for, those are all for golf carts. We start putting two, two larger vehicles in those spaces, then vehicles are going to get damaged and then you're going to, you're going to be cramping people's style. It's like, we don't want to be like the shopping mall on the mainland. Golf carts are, are adequate. These are new vehicles that are being introduced to the town 30 years after our, we already started establishing our, our vehicles here. Golf carts are fine. They're excellent.
But they're not.
I can respect somebody else wanting new vehicles. And, you know, we can make some provisions for that, but we are going to be 90%, 95% golf carts in this town. for that, but we are going to be 90%, 95% golf carts in this town, probably from here on out.
Well, it depends on where we go because if we, if our value is to have something that's quiet, low emissions and whatever, you're not getting those with those old two-stroke and you're not getting them in some of the four-stroke. So, so if, do we want to keep with, with that moving forward? I personally don't and I think in all of the little reports that we've done in the past, they say, heck no, get rid of the noise and the smell.
So are we going to make people buy these cars? Is that what we're going to do?
You're not going to make them. I mean, that right now they can still buy a golf cart, but, but if I was being more, and I just got an electric one, if I'm being a little more, if that's a value that I have and I thought that was a value that we had and the people of this town say is less noise, less emissions, I don't know why we wouldn't want to continue to go that way.
How about more regulation? I mean, I mean, we have some in place, but there is those golf carts that are extremely noisy. I mean, golf carts are a little bit noisy, but they're efficient, they're adequate, they're small, they're affordable, they're, they do the job that we need them to do. We need to move forward with new vehicles, of course, and, but as far as our parking, it's already been established. This parking spot is for a golf cart. We measured the golf cart and we said, we need plenty of space here. We don't want to be cramping people's style too much like that. The people with these new vehicles, the new wider vehicles, and there's not a lot of them, but they can find new parking spots over on, on Sumner Street, on Catalina Street. We'll just have to work it out. I mean.
Well, I mean, if you wanted, if you, if that, that will be another discussion we want to go, but, and if that's the decision of the council, that's the decision of the council, but just in terms of allowing the new ones, because the other thing we talk about, the quality of life and accessibility into the interior and, and it's not inexpensive. So.
These, these problems, these cars will be a problem in the interior. They go 60 miles on the mainland on flat roads. That's in, out here, they, I'd be, I think you'd be lucky to go half that, which means you get to the airport and you need to charge up.
You're talking about electric. There's also the gas.
Electric, yes, the gas ones are great. There's nothing wrong with, with the gas vehicles. They're very efficient, they're very quiet, they're, there's almost no emissions the way they make them nowadays, the way they make the catalytic converters and they, they put these filters on them and so I don't have a problem with that. I don't want to get the wrong, give people the wrong concept that you can take these vehicles to the Isthmus and back in one charge. You get out there and if you think, if these things go dead, it's not like you can't put a gallon of electricity in it. You can, you know, you're going to have, they're going to have to be towed, towed back. So there might be more of a problem than not on the electric ones, but the non-electric ones, I, I, you know, I'm.
But then if you have the conservancy willing to put in charging stations at the Isthmus or at Little Harbor, hallelujah, you know? I mean, that's also moving forward as well.
You can, if somebody wants to wait four, eight hours and then you get, you get four or five cars out there and you have one charging station, then everybody can just camp with me.
Okay.
Sublet.
Sold. Okay. So, well, since we're talking about the smart cars, let's, let's take the audience's comments on these, over the 4.55 inches, I should say. Go ahead, Misa.
My question on this reading the ordinance was the new parking, does it apply?
Can you speak into the microphone, please? Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
My question is with the new ordinance, it seems to be only for electric vehicles is the way it's written. And so I'm confused. So is a gas smart car okay to park? Is the, are the porters okay to park in the angled parking, just not electric?
No, just the oversized.
Just the oversized.
Well, that's not the way this reads. The way it reads is any electric neighborhood vehicle cannot park in the angled. So I'm not understanding why they're being singled out.
No, that's, that's, that's not right. If that's what it reads, that's, we're going to change that because the electric vehicles are the same size, correct me if I'm wrong, as the motorized gas vehicles. Is that right, Carson?
Correct.
Okay, so they're the same size. Yeah, you can have gas or electric, whatever, whatever, your pleasure.
So like, would a porter be able to park in the angled but not a smart car?
A porter is not an oversized autoette though. The porters are.
I'm not talking about oversized. I'm talking about the existing smart cars. The way this is reading is any neighborhood, any electric car cannot park in the angled space.
No, I think we.
No, it is, what it, again, following what was on the videotape is the municipal code defines a low speed vehicle, electric, neighborhood electric vehicle. And that is what is prohibited from parking in the angled spot. If you also want to add the smart for two car, we can easily write that in if that is the intent.
Okay, so I'm going to.
Easily just add that.
I'm going to chime in here because that was my recommendation. The intention of, of not parking in the angled parking was in fact for the, these new larger smart cars. I don't know that we can go back on the ones before. I am not sure about that, but these new ones, and I'm just going to respectfully disagree with you, Mayor, that I took the car out and I'm looking at all of my photos that I took when I parked in an angled spot and even having somebody stand and hold the door, I could not shimmy out the door and stay within the parking angled parking spot. And that was parking fairly in the middle. So I, I don't agree that they fit in the angled spots. When we were talking about this at the last council meeting, I was under the impression that we were talking about electric vehicles, which I am a fan of more electric vehicles in town. And so it wasn't until I actually drove this new car that I realized it was gas and not electric. So that was a little bit of a game changer for me there. The, if we want to agree to the gas or electric, regardless, the car is bigger and, and I don't think that it should be allowed to park in an angled spot. So I think the ordinance is written incorrectly according just that section. I don't think it should be all low speed vehicle, neighborhood electric because those neighborhood, when we, when they first, the council at the time first allowed for those neighborhood electric vehicles that were those larger golf carts, they don't have doors. So you just, there, there is nothing to shimmy around or try to get out. There is, there's no doors. That's what those, that's what that original one was. But for these new vehicles that have a full armed door, I don't, I don't think those fit. So if, if, my recommendation would be to just reword that where it is, the, the smart car or the smart for two or vehicle versus the auto, versus a golf cart. I, you know, I don't know, whatever words you want to use.
It would be quite simple if that's the council direction to say that vehicles with doors that open cannot park in the angled parking.
But then there's, but then there's the porters that fit within the golf cart, the original autoette size that, that is not the impact. So I think that's where the confusion was is when I was saying I would be in favor, last council meeting, I would be in favor of allowing the, this additional width in the vehicle, but just that it couldn't, and basically those only spots are on Metropole and, and you brought up that good point right across from the tuna club.
And then it's going to be on, on Sumner as well.
I, I can add to the ordinance, again, if that's council direction, my only question is I heard there's a new car out there because right now it would be the low speed electric vehicle, the smart for two, and if there's another.
I don't think, I don't think you get, you can't get specific enough. I don't think you should get specific because if I invented the Tesla and I bring it over, we're going to be changing it when the Tesla arrives? I mean, do you do it every time and behind, behind the eight ball? Or, or we need to, or we'll have to have staff aware of, okay, you start researching what's out there because people are going to start coming. So I don't know how we do it.
There's an Austin Martin smart car that's even wider than the Scion IQ. We don't have any Scion IQs here, do we? I don't think we do.
Yeah.
But we just want to keep the door open for, so that there's, that this is not monopolized, that, that, we just want to keep an open mind about all this, but thank you for bringing that up, Misa. That was very important that you noticed that in the ordinance and that we made adjustments there. So we have these electric, new electric vehicles and then we have Suzuki Samurai's as well. The old, I don't think the old, the older smart cars are a problem in those parking slots. They're.
It might be a problem for code.
Okay.
Because you're going down the street and you're looking at the rear end of one and the rear end of the other.
Yeah.
And if left or right, unless they're right next to each other, you're going to have a heck of a time telling which is bigger than the other, in my mind.
It is, it is difficult. I, it was hard for me to tell when you had your two cars up against, parked together in a diagonal slot. So we have to definitely define where we want to go with this because we have Suzuki Samurai's and the smart cars, the new wider smart cars and then the porters, so.
Carson, cut step on it.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, council, city staff, to address a couple of the issues, one that you had and city one that you had. Size wise of the vehicles, there are 4.55 inches difference between old body style and the new 453 body style, two figures either side of the car. You're right. I mean, the golf carts are never going to go away. They're a good fit for the island, but I don't know of any golf cart that's got an airbag on it. Even new body style or old body style of the 451 or 453 smart car, it's been a good fit, about 100 on the island. As far as taking it into the interior, we've already have plans in place to put charging stations, Two Harbors Airport or wherever we deem necessary or wherever you guys deem necessary. So we're trying to cross all those bases and we're going to learn as we go. Smart cars, you're right, 68 miles. It's not that far to Two Harbors and it's not that far to the airport. I have one myself, I've driven it 90 miles on a charge. You have to learn how to drive them. You don't put them to the floor because you do burn energy the more accelerator you give it. But if you feather them, you learn how to drive them. We have people that get 100 miles on them. So hope that answers some of your questions.
But is that with hills too? Because hills are a little more brutal on them.
They are, they are. And I will say the roads on the interior are not like the roads we drive down here in town. And that's the easiest way to put that.
We have to make that, we have to make that test before we start putting charging stations around it. We just have to see how the performance of the electric vehicles are out there and I mean, that's just something that we need to think about as well.
The technology is proven. Off-road conditions, you know, maybe not so proven, but I, I think that from an electric footprint standpoint, and you brought up a good point about our internal combustion engines, they're very efficient. They're low, low efficiency, 40 miles per gallon average, very safe car, but they're all built on the same chassis, the same platform. The doors open the same, the wheels still turn the same. The only thing is, is the drive. Any other questions you guys have that I can maybe assist on adding?
Okay, answer me this one because it seems like this is what I heard, but I don't know. That, okay, the one that is 4.55 inches, that is the gas and the electric ones?
Identical cars, both internal combustion engine and electric, just like the old 451 body style, same size, length and dimensions, no difference between an electric and a gas car. Same car.
Okay, as, where we sit right now, thank you, Carson.
Yes.
Where we sit right now is, is porters, small smart cars and Suzuki Samurai's are allowed to park in the diagonal parking, correct? So I believe so. Is that correct or is the?
Yes, you're right, you're right.
Okay. So going ahead further from, and that's an established, that's just the established protocol that we've used up to this point and I think it's good. I think we've done well with what we have. We should be grateful that we have had the golf carts to build our community with. They're, they're a little noisy, but they, they serve the purpose. We don't want to have to have airbags in our golf carts because people don't go that far. It's a little, it's a little swaying to me that I, that you call these low speed vehicles because you can go 60 miles an hour, probably even faster. They haul ass. So that's not something that we need to be doing around here. We need to slow down actually because there's too many children and old people and people with babies and so maybe going ahead, we change, we keep what we have, but we make the new cars that are coming in just work with us with our vehicles. In other words, you can't park here, but you can park over here. Just like if you have a golf cart, you can't park it in the full-size area outside of the museum because those are for the people with the full-size vehicles that have actually been here longer than the people who have golf carts. So this is the way, this is the evolution of transportation in our community and I don't think we should fight it. I think we should just go along with it. It's what we have. We have a bunch of golf cart spots, slots because we have a bunch of golf carts. We have some full-size vehicles that, that are still left and I think we need to respect that. Those are the oldest people, the oldest people that have had vehicles on this island. Those are the people that have lived here forever, like myself. It's like, or you know, Ollie or Beetle. It's like, you got to respect that, I believe, you know? I don't think we're any more special than anybody else or somebody that doesn't have a full-size vehicle. I just think that you, that's something that came with the turf when you, when you've been here for a long time. So maybe we, we should just take the, the new vehicles. I think Ollie's got a good idea, one-on-one-off possibly for, until we figure out the ordinance and allow some of these new vehicles in. I don't think everybody's going to have them. They're expensive. I mean, not that expensive, but and they have good lease terms, but they're expensive to maintenance, which can keep the door open for other companies with, you know, like, I think the Austin Martin is like six inches more than this. So they're way wider than, they're, they're even wider than the, than the Scion. So maybe we could just, because it doesn't seem like it's going to affect the parking that much. I don't think that the people that want these cars in this town wouldn't mind parking over on Catalina instead of Sumner or Catalina instead of, you know, Sumner versus Metropole. You know, it's, we're going to, we're going to have to go somewhere with this where we, we kind of back off, we pull the reins back and slow down until we figure out where we're at because it's going to, there's going to come a time when you're going to drive your golf cart from, from Metropole down the street and you can't find a parking spot. So you got to go over, you're going to be parking farther away from where you left from to just, just to go to the store. And we can't have that. We don't, we don't want it to be like the 405. We don't want it to be like, like the places over town where, where you're hitting each other's doors necessarily. So I think we're on the right track. We just have to modify as, as we grow with technology. Of course, we want green technology. We want to go with the flow, but that's really not, the electric technology is really not that far along yet with lithium ion batteries. They're not that friendly for the environment either when we're talking about, when you have to get rid of these batteries and, and rotate them out. So, you know, we got fossil fuel and then we got this hazardous material that we're throwing in, into the, into the landfill. So we got to understand exactly what we're looking at and we're in California too. So there's going to be more people that want electric vehicles. So I'm willing to make, make, make the consideration for those new vehicles. That's what I'm saying, under certain terms, like that we don't, that we don't take away what we already have, which is a good thing. So anyway, I'd love to hear from John Rigolato from Catalina, Omaha.
Yes. So I, I'm so glad to see that you're deliberating this and I am a little bit like thinking to myself, it's going, we're going too fast when it comes to vehicles because I, I thought I'd heard the council sort of have this, let's get the old cars off, let's kind of slow down on the vehicles that we have here. Because I mean, as in my observation, we don't really have the infrastructure to deal with as many vehicles as we have now. We're still dealing with issues of, you know, people that park in the same place forever and never move it at all. We don't have any way to impound vehicles. We don't have, you know, it's a full-time job just trying to get people to be following the rules of parking that there are now. And, you know, we have speeding issues, we have, and you know, the more vehicles we bring on the island, we're just asking to exacerbate all of that. So I, I don't know. I think you really do have to think about what is really necessary here as far as the mode of transportation and how much do we need and how much can we cope with? Because I think now, just like many other things on the island, it's, we're growing so exponentially and vehicles aren't making it any better, I don't think. So that's all.
But you know, the one interesting thing though is everybody, all these studies and all these reports and Jordan has them all, everybody wants to reduce the noise, the number of vehicles and whatever, but the minute you say, give up yours.
Yeah.
Who's going to give theirs up first?
So that's the frustration that.
So as something Joe said, I just wanted to get some clarification on, a definition of a low speed vehicle, neighborhood electric vehicle is not a smart car. A smart car is an automobile. It goes, the gas vehicle has top speed of around 90 miles an hour. So I'm wondering how that got in there like that.
Yeah, that, that perplexes me as well. Where did that come from? Low speed?
That was here before I got here. So that's been over 10 years it's been in there.
Thanks for pointing that out.
I don't know the genesis of that.
It was for the, it was for like the gems, the larger low speed vehicles that were
It was for, it was for like, the gems, the larger low-speed vehicles that were bigger than golf carts, but weren't really cars, and then he found cars that fit in the definition, the size definition, like chicken anything.
That's an obsolete term that we probably need to get out of there.
So, we're creeping up more and more, and it hasn't stopped, incrementalism is what it is, we're getting bigger and wider, and a couple of years, smart cars are going to come out with another one, that's going to be a little bit longer, and they're going to be looking at the same thing again, you gotta stop somewhere. I, I understand people are, leases are coming up, and they're going to take them off, but they do have the option to buy them, don't they?
Yes, they do have, yes, they do have the option to buy them.
Okay, so that, that should be clarified, because right now, the low-speed neighborhood electrical vehicle, according to our code here, says 138 by 66?
Mm-hmm.
So anything that's a low-speed vehicle, that is, that is classified as a low-speed vehicle, can go up to 138 inches? Is that the way I'm reading that?
Yes, that's what the, yes.
Because every golf cart that I sell, comes from, with the designation from the manufacturer as a low-speed vehicle, so that would actually mean I could take that up to 138 when I've been staying at 120.
That's a problem with...
Well, it's not, it's, it's how it's defined in the California Vehicle Code.
Right, but if it meets the qualifications in the California Vehicle Code, then that means I can go to 138 inches?
But, but I believe state law says that you have the authority to regulate differently than what this general state law provision, and the city attorney, correct me, so I think you, you have a lot of discretion that others, no other city in California, to my knowledge, has in, in regulating what size.
I think Mr. Regalotto's trying to educate us a little bit.
There's a specific state law that the prior city attorney did an excellent job in getting put in, that allows Avalon to limit cars, prohibit cars, you have, you have more power than any other city in the state of California, you have special legislation, and what the municipal code provides, is that for cars that are defined in California as low-speed vehicles, the city council has established, this is what the parameters, how long and how wide, you can make that less, if you want, but, again, that's, that's been what the prior city council has done.
But what you're saying, if I'm looking at that one, an autoet permit may be issued to an otherwise, I don't know what an otherwise qualified person, for an electric power autoet that meets the definition of that, 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 and that, because you already, because golf cart is an autoet, so yes, it looks like you could go to a length of 138 inches.
If it's, if it's as defined in that by, by the state of California, yes.
Oh, just by the state of California?
Yeah, it's not autoet, it's gotta be under this specific code, I'm trying to pull it up so I can read.
Low-speed vehicle?
Code 385-5, worst 49 CFR, 571.
These are problems that exist, and it's, it's, it's creating confusion, and you're right, it does need to be straightened out, I'm not for a moratorium, I'll tell you that, but, you know, I want clarification on this too, and if the smart car that is going to be allowed to be on the city streets is, needs to be defined other than what the state of California calls it, because it's not a low-speed vehicle, neighborhood electric vehicle, because it goes faster than 25 miles an hour, and if that's the case, if that's the case, then it's just, it's just a, it's just a gas car, it's no different than, say, a Suzuki, if it fit in the same, Suzuki Samurai, if it fit in the same box, that these people have been cutting and chopping for years to make them fit, they should be able to fit into the same box as a smart car.
And, and, and let me just tell you what, how it's defined, okay, it's a motor vehicle that meets the following requirements, four wheels, has to go after a mile going, it can get up to 20 miles per hour, but it cannot go any faster than 25 miles per hour, so, if it goes 26 miles per hour, doesn't qualify, it's got a gross weight of less than 3,000 pounds, and so, those are the, and it is not an autoet, specifically, the statute specifically says it's not an autoet, so, if, if the maximum speed is 25 miles per hour, you qualify under the state law, and you can, you can park in, you can have one of those cars in Avalon.
And then, so item, then, number two then, an autoet permit may be issued to an otherwise qualified person for a Smart42, provided such vehicle is registered as a motor vehicle with a DMV width of 66 or less, as measured on the widest part of the vehicle, so, that includes them, but then you're saying, that, but I hear John, that, it just, well, attorneys wrote this stuff.
This is, no, 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 okay, what this section does, is it adds to five inches, okay? B2 takes the five inches that we were directed to add to the new Smart42 car, so before it was 61 inches, and now it's 66.
Okay, and I think we need to take it 66.
My suggestion is you take the name Smart42 out of there.
Yeah.
Just make it a...
A generic name.
Just a generic vehicle, or whatever you want to, a shorty car, or whatever you want to call it, but take the name out of there, so it doesn't show favoritism to any specific manufacturer, and then if you're going to create that box, anything that fits in that box, that can be registered through the state of California, is, should be allowed to be legal, if you want to go there.
I mean, so basically, we'd be saying, we're changing the autoet.
You're defining the category that you put these smart cars in, because you've allowed them to be wider and larger than, than the autoets were intended to be, you know, and I know we have so much more room over here on the island to allow these, but...
But then we're also saying that, you know, there's the possibility that other cars are going to come in, so basically, in my eyes, we're just changing the dimensions of, the specifications of the autoet to be...
Six inches wider.
Six inches wider.
Yeah. And what's the length on that, 138?
The, I'm sorry, say that again?
Well, you have in here...
111, I think.
The length on those?
What's the length on the smart?
On the short car?
Uh, 111.
Carson, what's the length on your smart car?
I think they're 111, 112.
112.
112, okay, that's...
I have it written down somewhere.
Yeah, listen, there was something in here that said 138.
Right, and, and was that the gem?
That's the low-speed one, yeah.
That's the low-speed, okay.
Your, your autoet is defined in your municipal code in its separate section, that defines what an autoet is, so an autoet is defined as an overall length of no greater than 120 inches.
555 width. Well, I have questions, and we don't have the experts here, like, like Dudley, how many of those 138-inch vehicles do we even have, those low-speed vehicle, neighborhood electric vehicle, how many do we even have?
There's probably not a lot of them, and they have to be, according to this, they have to be electric.
Right, I wonder how many we have though?
Edison's got a couple.
I've seen one.
Company's got a couple, I think.
Well, those are the kind of rounded, things like that?
The gems, and probably four-seater electrics also, I mean, six-seater, because there are some six-seater electrics out there.
I wrote them last night to try to get the dimensions on those things, because they had the, and the ones that you can use in utility trucks as well, as just the little simple ones, but they didn't get back to me.
So, anyway, my suggestion is, you know, if you're going to create a category, you're going to expand this, this width for the smart car, you gotta create some kind of new category, because it, it doesn't fit into anything here, and then it just needs to be a box, if you want to do that, I, I don't want to do that, but if that's what you're going to do, it'll help to find things out.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty good, John.
May I say something, please?
Please.
I don't remember the specifics of what type of vehicle that was, but council, time was very adamant that it, those measurements only applied to those type of vehicles, it did not apply, they did not want it to apply to the golf cart, because we are just increasing the length, increasing the length, and it's just as bad as increasing the number of vehicles.
Right.
We could thoroughly research that and bring you back all the information.
No, no, but that, yeah, yes.
If I could just, just one other thing, just as history, just, so, because the one substantive change that you did do, and it was right after, it was around the same time that you did the moratorium on golf carts that got, that resulted in the litigation with the Hermosa Hotel, is you changed your ordinance that said that you can only have one autoet per person, and if you have multiple residences, let's say you have five homes, you only get one autoet for all five homes, you can only get an autoet where you live, and so, if you have five houses, and they're otherwise unoccupied, you only get one autoet, and it burns off after five years, so, if, so, in other words, it allowed people to keep their autoets, but it burns off after five years, with the exception that if they can show that they're parking it off-site, not on city streets, they could keep it.
After five years?
What?
After five years, is that what you said?
Yeah, yeah, after five years, they have to be off the street, and that's, that was done about four years ago.
I think if I had five houses, I'd at least have one off-street parking spot somewhere.
Again, it's just history that, that you have taken some action in the past to reduce cars, and you require that you only get an autoet if you actually use it, so, I mean, you know, autoets used to apply and be issued to dwelling units, and you changed the ordinance to, the autoets follow the person now, not a dwelling unit, because there's concern that dwelling unit is not, you know, you could have a lot of dwelling units and cars parked all over the place, now it's, it's gotta be a dwelling unit, and the person has to reside in that dwelling.
Carson, did you want to make a comment?
Counsel, Mayor, I just have one question, we're talking about electric vehicles, and we're talking about gas vehicles, you know, I've, I've been coming to the island several years, and I enjoy coming here, but how many electric golf carts are out there in the rental pool? How many electric golf carts are, you know, homeowners or the current residents have? I haven't seen any, when we're talking about electric vehicle code, every rental vehicle on this island, it's a golf cart, it's a gas combustion engine, most all of them that I see that are, you know, when you get off of Front Street, you can see them, and I'm there every day that I'm here on the island, I mean, we have gas cars too, and he brought up a good point, everybody has, they're quiet, and you're right, you know, do we need an airbag here on Catalina? Probably not, but that's how the car is designed, but we're looking at the total autoet program, you know, all the golf carts are all gas, they don't fall in an electric vehicle, so maybe that code does need to be reevaluated, maybe needs to be looked at, you know, again, I have to tell all of you, and everybody listening to this, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel, you know, we are an automobile manufacturer, Mercedes-Benz has had this brand now for over 20 years, it is safe, I think the electric car and the gas car fits the program, honestly do.
Well, and so do 100 other people.
Yeah, and, and right now, there's been 75 inquiries in the last, since our last meeting, people wanting cars. Now, did we spur that up a little bit? Yeah, and I've made the comment to those people, you got a golf cart, it's got to come off the island, these people own golf carts, because we haven't addressed the issue about parking, and I do agree with you, I, I, I think that's another discussion, but, you know, we've all talked about, you know, we bring on 150 to 250 or 500 smart cars, where are you going to put them all? You know, there's got to be, there's got to be some type of a program put in place. I brought up years ago, putting together a program that will help pay to bring the golf carts off the island, if it replaces with an electric or a gas smart car, that, that offer still stands, you know, we've, we've hoped in the city would participate in that, because we definitely will participate in it, whether it's a $100 a car, 500 a car, or $1,000 a car, same way with maintenance with the other cars that we want to bring on the island, we're going to do a one-stop shop, so maintenance is included in the car, so you don't have to worry about maintenance if you're on a three-year lease, or if you buy a pre-owned car, so we're trying to address some of those issues, but, you know, all the golf carts here, they're not electric, they're still burning gas, you know, the size, I think is, is, you know, we're two fingers on either side of the car, but I'm open to discussion with, from, from any of you guys anytime.
Well, and throwing something else out, and maybe, because right now, I'm not really in favor of a moratorium, however, but I, but I did hear your comment when he said he's gotten 75 inquiries, now, some of those might be inquiries for the people that were getting their leases up and whatever, I would be curious to know the timing of those leases, and how many people we're talking about, so maybe we say, if, if there was some kind of a moratorium of some sort, we say, but for those peoples, because, because I hate for them to lose their car and then say, well, no, I guess I have to go out and get a golf cart, when I really don't want, when I'd rather have one of these other vehicles so I can go into the hills, so maybe we, if we found out what the numbers were, we say, okay, these are the only ones we're going to let come in, are the ones that are renewing their leases.
That's the way it would work, one on and one off, if you have a car, you want to renew your lease, you want to get the bigger one, you get rid of the old one, you get a bigger one, that's, that's the intention, it's, it's, well, simplify purpose, I have a leased smart car.
Right.
Okay, it expires next month.
Right.
I want to get the new smart car that's too big.
Right.
We're here to establish a new size to allow the smart car to come in, my leased car goes back to, and I get a new one.
Right.
And that's, that's what the moratorium does, it doesn't allow 18 people that don't have any cars over here to bring cars over, it doesn't increase the population any, and that, that's, that's the fear I have, but, you know, we've had this discussion, these have some, in the last few weeks, there's been inquiries made about getting cars over here, and it's the same thing that the 70s, I mean, we're just gonna, if we talk about doing it, and we don't do it in the urgent way, we're going to end up with a bunch more cars over here, if we do it in the urgent way, it buys us time to talk it through, and lets the people that are on the island have the cars that the leases are expiring, let them replace them, we're going to possibly take it, accommodate the Scions that are one inch wide or something like that, I mean, I, I don't have a problem with allowing a little bit larger car to be defined, I have a problem of allowing 1,635 cars to go to 1,735 cars, that's my, that's my problem, it's not necessarily with the size, it's with the number, and it's with the parking, and that's...
Just for clarification purposes, I have people, island residents now that don't have a golf cart, that have relocated here, so in essence, what we're saying is that, say, if I buy a property here, and I want an autoet, I'm not allowed to have a golf cart or a car, is that where we're staying?
That's what it would be.
At the present time, but I think realistically down the future, 90 days, four or five months, what I envision is that if you have off-street parking, and you obey the parking downtown, I don't think the city cares, if you're parking on one of the justice streets, I don't think the city cares, because, you know, if you have off-street parking, you're not impacting your neighbors, if you're in a neighborhood that's got highly restricted parking, then you're impacting your neighbors, I don't think we want to see any more impacting of the neighborhoods, and that's me personally.
Understood.
So, I mean, if you buy a house tomorrow, you probably couldn't get a house, couldn't get a car, but in four months, you probably could get one if you have off-street parking, and if you have, it's a new house, you've got off-street parking, or if it's condo, or it's Hamblin Cove.
Well, and then, this is, the other thing that I think is a little bit problematic right now, is, is the, and I think there was a meeting, all the parking spaces that we have on Metropole now, those, most of those people, there's a lot of those people now, you can park there eight hours a day, there's no time limit on those ones closer to the church.
It was going to be, it was going to be one hour, we haven't striped it yet.
Oh, is it going to be one hour?
I never remember it being one hour, I...
When the museum was talking about it.
Those were all day, anything past the old fire station.
Number one, the museum came in, when he talked about restriping it, we were talking about making it one hour.
All the way up to the church?
Yeah.
Yeah, all those new ones?
That's a terrible idea, I mean, you gotta let people go downtown and shop, you gotta go to the post office, the bank, the store, and go sit down on the wall and have maybe a salad or an ice cream, that's three, that's three hours, you want people to be able to spend money.
Stripe three hours, eh?
Yeah, I don't agree with the hour, but, but the eight-hour or 10-hour day.
That's an area where people, some people live up there, maybe the residents up there need, need to have...
They're supposed to get stickers to say they can park all day.
Okay, then the residents in that area need to be able to get stickers, like Ralph Morris can, well, that's, that's the full-size sign, but, you know, they've called, and there's, there's people that live down there that, Buddy, Buddy Rain, I mean, those people, we can't take their parking from them, that's, they don't have off-street parking, they have on-street parking, I'm kind of concerned about taking people's, taking people who only can afford a house to have off-street parking, to let those people only be the ones to have new vehicles over there.
So, there's a discussion that when it come to the next cycle, sticker cycle next March, that residential parking stickers will be issued for the Metropole, so the people that live there can get all-day parking, and, you know, the one hour, I, I don't, if I go downtown, I don't spend more than an hour downtown, but, you know, if you need three-hour parking, but if you need three-hour parking, make it, make it three-hour parking, just discourage people from driving down to Metropole and parking all day long.
I understand, especially the driving from...
We did their... We did, there was a meeting held a few week up, a few weeks ago, with all of the, they were invited, all the residents or owners of property businesses along Metropole to review and offer suggestions for Metropole parking. People who were adjacent, who lived near there, they were invited. We, and that report should be coming back to the council with the input from them. I'm not an expert in this, but let me, well, the one thing that I, I've heard the discussion tonight is part, the main problem is the off street parking. We do not have an off street parking plan. And, 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 or, and that's what I think in goals that you've, that you're, that there's been a discussion, or we've offered some thoughts, that we really need to be looking at that as, as, as a, as an alternative because of crowding on streets like Morello or others that are, that are, that are, that we need some kind of plan to not force people to get rid of their carts per se, but to find some way that we can accommodate what we have. I'm not sure that helps.
Well, I'm not a big fan of the off street parking because once you start cutting into the, into the side of the sidewalk there, you're eliminating regular parking.
That is very true.
That's to be a big issue with me. Not to mention able to get between the houses and do what you have to do for emergencies and what.
Some, some people.
It's been a big problem. It's, I mean, even back when I was, we were doing stuff for the planning back in the day, there was an issue and we talked about it, and kicked it around. So you, you get off street parking, so you eliminate one parking on the sidewalk because they have a curb cut. So there's elimination.
There is a way to avoid that by using a roll curb, but some communities doesn't how they do.
That, that might be.
It's not as, as comfortable, but it.
That's what I have, so I can park my.
But I mean, yeah, but off street parking is definitely an issue and a problem, in my opinion.
Where, absolutely, I agree with where there's only public space allowed. I mean, at this point, that's why I've mentioned to David, and we've done away with curb cuts because, I mean, but off street parking, like with Hamilton Cove under, they're going to put in 88 more units, which means there's 88 more vehicles on the street. The reason those people get vehicles is because they can afford to buy a house. But the people who've lived here 10 years, let's say, and they've never had a vehicle, but they decide they want one, and they don't have off street parking, they can't have a golf cart. Only if you have enough money to buy a house is when you can have a golf cart. That kind of disturbs me. So when you mentioned providing off street parking for those people that deserve a vehicle, maybe need a vehicle, but can't have one, I think we need to make an accommodations for that. And then, so this is, this is going to be a revolving door. This, it's going to be modified, and it's going to be a progression and an evolution. This, this, this vehicle ordinance, I think that we're working on it.
Oh, yeah.
But I think we have something now, but.
We've got one little thing, maybe the size of the vehicle, the width of the vehicle, and changing the wording. Are we willing to go to what, some number like 67? So we don't have to do it every year? And, and with the caveat that they, because I wasn't, I personally wasn't agreeing so much with no diagonal parking or whatever, but I think I'm willing to compromise on that and go, okay, you know, so we could be a little bit wider and then, I mean, does that seem like something we seem to be agreeing on? Okay. So that's what, you got it? City Attorney? We want to go 67?
Okay, so.
That's four.
Let me just.
Well, what's the width of a regular vehicle? Not that we want to get fat and dumpy, but no, some of us do like.
It depends. If it's a duly or it's a truck like mine.
So.
Eighty inches.
Eighty inches.
An auto wet permit. So we're going to expand the width. Because right now, a regular auto wet is 55.
All right.
And we have this exception for cars that are the smart for two. And we don't want to go by brand. We want to go, go generic, raise the width to 67, but what I need.
From what? From?
It's 61 right now. And then the previous request was to make it five. And now there's, now.
How wide is it?
Five additional.
How wide is the Scion? Mr. Dunn? How wide is it? The Scion?
The Scion.
It's 66.1 inches.
Sixty six.
No, the Scion.
It's five feet, six point, it's five feet, 6.1 inches.
I just looked it up. The Scion IQ is 66.1 inches width and 117.5 inches length.
So 67 covers it.
And this one, I bet is 120.
Okay, but, okay, just, I'm trying to make certain that we don't have to do this over and over again. So I'm going to ask the car expert, what if I'm going to call it generic?
66.5.
Yeah, well, the terminology in the industry is called microcar. That's terminology in the industry. The smart for two is the smallest microcar that's available. And that statute is going to state for the next, this new body style will stand for seven years. There are some other cars that are close. They are close, but they're not the same width of a smart. But I would also like to remind you guys, we're willing to put the charging stations on the island at your request for the electric cars. So maybe that opens up some avenues for other people that have a golf cart, that's a combustion engine, they want to do an electric car. You know, we've agreed to do those charging stations for free. And the maintenance center is coming on the island. Our target date's April 1 for opening date. So we do have infrastructure in place to support the smart for two.
So I, so, but, so my question would also be, so, so let's say we allow you to place charging stations on our streets. Okay. And then I have a Scion. So, I mean, I don't, but if I did. And then, so, and you were talking about, oh, well, we could just give the electricity free for the other, for, for your, your customers. But I would want those charging stations because I think they, they're, they're universal, right? So that, then maybe if I had a Scion, I may have to stick in my credit card to get electricity.
You know, and, and, and that's, that's, you know, we're not showing, just showing favor to the Mercedes brand or the smart brand. I, I think the electric concept's good for the island.
Yeah.
And, and whether there's other cars that, that island residents want, you know, absolutely. The service center that we're planning, we want to service other makes and models than just smart car. Let's face it, we want to be a profitable entity. We, we, you know, we are a profit organization. We're not a nonprofit. So yeah, we would, we would welcome that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, we've got one thing settled.
Yeah.
Okay, Olio.
Um, Scott's still written. Let's got it written.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
I'm still confused as to whether or not that means every auto wet can come in at that, or how do you determine?
No, it's going to be defined as, because I have to have some context and the DMV does, I cannot find a definition of microcar. So it would be person for a smart for two Scion or similar microcar. And that means it's not auto wets, because auto wets are clearly defined in the municipal code.
And low vehicles too. Okay.
Okay. Auto wets are specifically defined. This is not an auto wet. Auto wets have to be 55. But for things that are, the term microcar, they can be 67.
And what's the length they can be?
120.
So somebody comes out with one next year, 121, we just got to.
So the 138 for the low speed electric.
Yeah. It's 10 feet, the Scion length is 10 feet, one inch. So that makes it 121 inches.
That's my only problem. So if somebody comes out with something else, and then now it's a bigger and longer, so now we got to change the ordinance again?
The more you rely on state law as the, as the guide, excuse me, sorry. The more you rely on state law as a guide, you're going to get what they get throughout the state. So the goal really is to define what you want the link to be. Because you have, as I've always understood it, the authority to make a difference in what you regulate for, and what you allow versus what the state of California would allow in, in that other place over on the other side of the water.
We, we can't read the future, so, but we can understand that maybe it's, this might last for 10 years. At least we're, we're, we're going with the flow for, for as long as we can foresee in our, in our, for the, for the insight that we have and the knowledge that we have. I think we're moving forward.
Six seven times 122.
We're not going backwards, but also make sure that you, that we understand that, I kind of lost my train of thought. Excuse me.
How about we make it length 67 wide, 122 long?
Because the Scion is 120.1.
You mean the new vehicles?
New size, yeah.
Okay.
To allow for a little bit of growth.
Yeah, but I don't think it's going to get any bigger than, I don't think we should do that. The length.
Is that Scion four seater?
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
No.
That's what I looked up.
It's a four seater?
Yeah.
That's what I looked up.
You know, why don't you just throw the whole code out? And just be done with it? You know, you got to stop somewhere. Now you're going to put four seater cars out there, which is going to put essentially my, my, my company out of business.
And we can't do that. And the reason is.
And all the profits are going to the mainland. And nothing's staying here. You know, I've lived in this town for 50 years. This is my business. This is my home. And, and the more you change the code, the more it affects my business. So just either throw out the whole code, or follow what the rules were when they set it down to begin with. You know, it's, it's not about, your, your job is not to change the law every time somebody has something new that comes off the line. It's to limit the number and size vehicles on the island. That's what it was set down originally for. Follow that.
Well, we, you know, we tried to, we tried to regulate the noise. That doesn't seem to work. You know, I mean, if it were me, John, I would like to say, and we had this discussion the other day, you know, and, and maybe with the help of law enforcement with the new ticket books coming out, if in fact, I think the new ticket books are coming out, if, if the community would take care of their vehicles, because golf carts can be cheap, you can buy one for 500 bucks. But if it's a rattle trap and a noisy thing and giving emissions, I'm not excited about that. And, and I know that helps your business, but there's a point of no return on some of those golf carts.
Yes, I agree.
I believe. And we have no system for that. We failed in that because they don't have impound. Nobody wants them on the mainland because it's junk.
So we have, we have a system to fix everything, but no way to do it. Because the laws are already on the books, right?
Say again.
The laws?
Laws are on the books.
The laws are on the books for noise and problems, but we're just not enforcing it. You know, I get, I get, I get five, six cars a month in my shop with no stickers on them.
Yeah. That, Madam Mayor, that is to your point, if I may.
Please.
To your point, we think you're right. We think there are a number of, we, we know there are a number of unlicensed DMV, that there's a number, or there are vehicles that have no stickers. And we have discussed with the Sheriff's Department and our code enforcement that issue. There's vehicles that are illegal. They should not be here. If they're not licensed by DMV and they're not tagged with city tags, we offer the opportunity to make them legal. If they're not, then they're going to be shipped off and we're working, we've made contact with the island company about possible, because they have the same problem, because people are even abandoning cars or vehicles on property. Then they just leave them there and they get 20 tickets, but they're never paid. So from an enforcement side, we are coordinating with the Sheriff's Department Code Enforcement, and we want to bring up, hopefully a voluntary program, but, but these, those, but we want to enforce not to harm anybody, but to clean up the, the mess that we have existing.
Yes, there's a mess out there. And yes, there's a lot of golf, golf carts out there that are noisy. And I wish we could fix them all, but these people have no money.
Just so you know, the definition of a microcar, at least in Europe, is two doors, not four doors.
Oh, these are two doors. They're four seaters though.
Yeah. And he's, he's saying a microcar has two doors. It's not a four door. If you want to follow that definition, that's fine with me. Because, you know, it's not a four door. Can't carry four people.
I didn't think anything was a four door we've been talking about.
Well, they're four seaters.
And the Scion is four seaters, but it's 120 inches. It's still as big as these, these golf carts that are in town.
The Scion is, is 122.
It's 120 inches, I believe.
120.1.
They list it on their, there's two different ones. They list one at 117.5 and one at 120.1. So that's where I got the 117. There's two different ones.
We should not, I, I can have some sympathy for what John's saying, and also some respect because they've helped us build our transportation system in Avalon because of their hard work and their dedication to their craft. I respect that. But also, we, we want to move a little bit forward to see how this works. Honestly, I don't, I don't, I, I don't think there's going to be that big of an impact, but maybe there will. Hopefully, it, it won't drive you guys out of business. I don't think, I, that is a big concern of mine. Moving ahead forward is, is, is also a concern.
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not going to change what, the way I do business in Avalon. It's a golf cart. It's going to be that way.
I understand. There are a lot of people who.
There's some people that don't want, they want something different. They want to be enclosed. They want these little cabs. I respect that. And, and I think we're trying to implement some of these cars, but not to the point to where we're gonna, we're gonna switch golf carts for these cars. That's, that's a misnomer that I've heard through town that, yeah, I heard you guys want to take away the golf carts and put in these new cars. And that's just simply not true. There's a few people that want these cars, and I can respect the fact that they do. I know Jack drives one everywhere, and he gets a lot of things done, and he can park just about anywhere he wants to. It's like as big as my golf cart. It's teeny. And, and, and a few other people use them. And I don't think it takes up that much more space. I think what we're just asking for is a few inches on width. It's not going to affect the golf cart parking. That's what I, that's a big point I have, is I don't want these things parking where the golf carts park because they're bigger. We've already established that golf carts are a fact of life in this town, and they're an important part of our transportation. And that has nothing to do with you personally. It's, it's, it's just the fact that you just happen to own the golf cart business. And I totally respect your opinion on these things. And I'm really glad you showed up to, um, 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 give us your, um, your, your knowledge and your expertise on this. That's what I'm looking for in you. I understand your passion about, about you, you can't also go out of business.
Keeping my job, yeah.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's your craft, and that's the way you make your living. And you pay your bills that way. So that's something that I understand, and I have sympathy for that. I mean, not sympathy, but I have respect for that. But also, I'm making my decision based on what I feel is the best thing for the town, but you.
We all want to do what's best for the town. That, that's what we all want to do. And, but I'm just saying, sometimes the change that you're trying to implement is going to do further damage down the road. And it's called incrementalism, which has been going on for a while now. Things have been changing through various councils and, you know, somewhere, like I've always said, you got to draw the line somewhere.
Okay, some things haven't changed, and this vehicle code hasn't changed, and we haven't made any changes to it. So, and this is, this is a pretty small change. And I, like I said, I don't think it's going to, it's going to change again for, for years from now. I think what went over the top is when Ole wanted that extra two inches. And I don't think we need that extra two inches. I think 120 is good. I think a few of these cars are good. One on, one off. That is, if somebody has.
That's a moratorium. And, and just a few words on the last moratorium when Ole said when the number of cars went from a few, four, four, 500 to eight, 900. That's because the city council says, we're going to stop allowing any more cars. If you want one, you better go out and get one. That's what set that off.
Went from eight to 11.
Eight to 11?
And now how many is it?
Eight to 11.
Forty five days.
Now it's down to what, five?
Four, four and change.
400.
400. Okay. But, but the reason was, is because the city council at that time told everybody, we're going to do this. We're going to stop issuing any more permits. And the last, and on this date, you can have no more cars. So everybody ran out and got one. If you tell people now, we're going to stop issuing golf cart permits and cap it at this number, everybody's going to run out and grab one. If you don't say that, that's not going to happen. I mean.
You have to say it, though. You have to say what you're going to do. You, we can't do things behind closed doors and then just say surprise.
No, no, I, I understand that. I understand. But, but by, by saying that you're going to do that and meaning it, it's going to cause people to panic and run out and get, get cars. If you say, we're not going to, we're not going to stop the limit, we're just going to figure out how to manage it better, then maybe people won't run out and grab their cars.
But it's, because they didn't do an urgency in the seventies, and the purpose, this is an urgency here tonight, and if we can get four votes and it passes, you know, you're not going to have that influx while we work on the issue. We're not going to have to, people aren't going to be flocking out there and buying a zillion new golf carts, bringing them in town before we get an order to the limits of the number.
Right, I understand.
And that's.
Before you, before you cap it off and say no more.
Yeah.
Which allows, you know, nobody that moves over here or retires or decides they want a car.
I don't think this is the final. I don't think this is the final.
I know it's not.
I, I, there, there are issues that need to be addressed. Parking, I think, is the one. Downtown parking, residential parking. I think there's ways we can manage parking better than we're doing it, because we're not managing parking now. We don't manage downtown parking as well as we should. I don't think we, I think the discussion about metro, making one hour's not enough, but all day's too long. Maybe we do three-hour, two-hour, four-hour parking, something like that. But I think we need, I think we need to buy ourselves some breathing room, and this discussion, as long as it goes on, without any action on the council's part, is just gonna bring in more and more and more and more golf carts.
The breathing room you're talking about is people going out and buying cars. The breathing room that you, that you're not talking about is discussing whether the hours are gonna change and stuff like that. That's, that's something that can be discussed all the time. The only really thing you're talking about here is just stopping people from going out and buying another car. That don't, that, that don't have one right now.
One of the three hundred that are eligible for one.
One of the what?
There's three hundred households in Avalon that are eligible for golf carts.
Right.
That don't have them.
That don't have them.
And I don't wanna see three hundred more golf carts show up in town.
Yeah, well.
Well, eventually that might grow to that. I mean, I don't know. I, I mean, it's, if we, if we were promised that Hamilton Cove was putting in eighty-eight units, and all, and we've promised them that every single unit gets a golf cart, that's, that's eighty-eight carts. That's some business for you. I mean, some, somebody agreed on that. Some council approved that you can have eighty-eight units, and you can have eighty-eight golf carts, instead of saying, "We'll give you three vans, we'll give you three grans that run twenty-four hours a day."
Well, there used to be, at Hamilton, there was set number of permits. There was like, uh, I don't know, maybe three hundred permits. And if somebody wanted to come into town, they had to check out one of those permits. When they came back through the gates, they dropped their permit off. That way, there wouldn't be any more than three hundred cars in town at one time. At another time, a council member decided they wanted to do away with that, because it wasn't fair. And that's something you can think about again.
Absolutely.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
As I understand, and the city attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, um, is that what the advantage of the urgency ordinance is, it's, it's, what it does is, it stops it if there's a four-fifths vote. It stops now, tonight, if it were adopted. What it does also is, within ninety days, though, the urgency, not the regular ordinance, but the urgency ordinance then, you have ninety days to study an issue. Is it ninety? Hundred and twenty?
No, 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 that's only with zoning codes.
So you can't adopt an urgency ordinance, uh?
No, 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 no.
So I stand corrected.
Is that, if it's a zoning, if you're adopting an urgency ordinance for zoning purposes, to prevent a use of property, then you have to revisit it within forty-five days, and then within a year. But when you adopt an urgency ordinance under the police power, that's not a zoning, you don't have to revisit it. You can keep it as long as you want until you've completed whatever studies you've done. So for instance, when we did the urgency ordinance that the Ninth Circuit upheld in the Milan or the Hermosa matter, okay, we adopted the urgency ordinance and did not come back, and we completed that study in four months. And then we adopted the current Ottawa ordinance that, uh, we have now.
So that, that took us four months to do.
So your point, though, I think, is still the point, that what the urgency ordinance does with a four-fifths vote, is gives you an opportunity to study while doing something. You study the issue and then address other issues that may come up. And it avoids what count, what the mayor pro tem and some have talked about, is that you'd have a flood of, uh, of issues while you study the problem and put in place other things that you may wish to do. But again, that's, that takes four-fifths vote, and it's, has to be something that you agree on. And hopefully, there's a timeframe, if you were to do that, that there'd be a timeframe that we'd have to come back with solutions, where we'd get information from staff on what, how many available of this or that. Uh, and, and, uh, so that's just, I hope that's of some value.
Let me ask another question, Ole.
Mm-hmm.
So I moved to the island, and I have some disabilities.
Knew that.
Thank you. Still capable of driving.
Right.
Lucid, perhaps, but, so what, so what do we, we just say, you're just stuck in your house for four months?
We have to make exceptions.
The municipal code already provides an exception. It's in chap, Title II. It's a reasonable accommodation, uh, where you have to, uh, there's a general rule that says that everything in the municipal code, uh, you have to reasonably accommodate people with disabilities.
Well, but, but, you know, it's kinda like the service dog thing.
I know, I know.
I don't want everybody running to the clinic either and saying, "I've got a disability," and I don't know how you, you guard against that.
But no, it's, it's, like I say, I, I envision this ordinance being changed sometimes in the next six months.
You just went from two to six.
Well, I'm trying to, I'm trying to give-
Realistic.
Yeah, I know.
Trying to give our city manager and staff some time to get all this stuff done, because they gotta get the ruler out and measure all the streets and stuff like that. In fact-
I, I, I have just one request, and I'll shut up. Um, if you decide to adapt this moratorium, so study, I have inventory, and I have people waiting for sales. I would ask that I would be allowed to, to sell my inventory before this is slam shut on me.
How many, how many pieces do you have?
I have to go count what I have, but I have inventory.
More than a hundred?
And, and I have, I have money invested in it, and it's on flooring, so I would like to be able to sell. And I can get you a list of what I have.
Yeah.
And then we have to do the same thing with John.
I totally respect that.
Yeah, that's fine.
You could, well, let me build into the, again, if there are four votes tonight, and it's an urgency, the request would be to accommodate that, is you would, uh, select a number of additional permits and then cap it at that. So it's not one-to-one, it's, I don't know, forty-five, you know, whatever that number is.
And John, there, these are either people, are these people replacing golf carts, or people asking that don't have one?
I, I'm not really sort of that right now. I have to go check to see what our, our sales is.
Okay, 'cause that would be an interesting number to know as well, Ole.
So replacing, that's not a problem at all, but if you got new permits, let us, let us know how many.
Other ones just don't want to leave.
Could I make a suggestion, or just a little bit of input? You're right, the microcar is two doors. We make a Smart for four, but we're not bringing it to the US, it's gonna stay in Europe. Uh, the microcar is two doors and two doors only. You know, I'm the individual that brought to council and asked to make the variance of four-point-five-five inches difference fourteen months ago, when I knew this car was coming. I think the one-twenty's a good number. You guys may, on down the road, suggest to change that. But, uh, the, I think we're just looking at the width. Parking, you guys will get that figured out, I'm sure. There's just, 'cause some places, the car is, is not gonna work to park. But the width of that four-point-five-five, I think, is somewhat accessible. The length, uh, I, I think the one-twenty's adequate.
Well, that's not if it doesn't include the Scion, which is one-twenty point one. So we need to add a little bit for that.
Okay.
A point one, then.
Just my opinion. Just my opinion.
Yeah, right.
One-tenth of an inch is all we're gonna add. I, I don't think we need to go any, excuse me, go ahead.
That's okay. I just wanna say, I'm gonna come back to the fact that when we talked about this two weeks ago, I was very much under the impression that we were talking about an increase for electric vehicles. I am in favor of greening up our community, of more electric vehicles, not more gas vehicles. And I am, again, I'll say, it wasn't until I got in the vehicle that I realized we weren't talking about electric vehicles, so.
Good point. What was your problem with the, with the gas vehicle?
Well, we're trying to go to, you know, we're trying to have less emissions, and we're, you know, less noise, less emissions, all of that. And a brand-new vehicle is gonna have less noise and less emissions, I understand that. And I understand the business plan of, of what you guys wanna do, and I appreciate that. You wanna constantly have newer vehicles on the island. So I'm in favor of that as well, but we, I, I really wanna see more electric vehicles on the island, not more-
Well, as we move forward, and this is gonna be an ever-changing thing, hopefully, with other councils to come, I don't have a problem with the electric now, because we, we, we are not in a situation to handle all the electric. We can't even do it with golf carts yet. So, I mean, I think those are things when we're really planning, we say, "By the year, dah, 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 dah." Because everybody that's leasing these, in three years, they turn them in, they get a brand-new vehicle. I mean, there's not a lot of problems with them. I think when you talk to the smart car owners, they're pleased with all of that, and I don't think in three years they get real noisy, but, but that's just the least one. And if there's maintenance, right now, there hasn't even been maintenance on the island. I mean, Steve has done it, but, but not by them. So I don't have a problem with the electric for now. And again, if we wanna do our long-term plan and say, "Okay," because then you've got proponents of electric, I mean, of gas golf carts forever, too. So unless we said, "Okay," and all the golf carts in the world will be electric one day, and I don't know that we're gonna, we're gonna say that.
Well, I think she was just saying, I respect what she was saying, moving forward. She was adding that moving forward-
Yeah.
She was into the electric, so.
But she thought all these-
Just one item. I, I didn't wanna repeat what we've already talked about, but I, I tend to applaud Cindy's idea about all-electric. But unfortunately, the town we live in doesn't lend itself to that. Fortunately, I, I have an electric smart car. I can plug it in in front of my house, but most people can't. They park on the street, they can't, so to eliminate the option of somebody being able to have a smart car, unless it's electric, it'd make it more difficult. I think there's probably, I mean, Carson could probably tell us this, but how many electric versus gas? But I gotta believe it's more like a, you know, seventy, thirty gas versus electric, at least. Just for the sheer fact of not being able to park and plug it in. Thank you.
Okay, fair enough. So then, the other comment that I would make, um, and either we're gonna need to take a few-minute break, or we're gonna have to throw something out here on the table and move forward. The-
Agreed.
I, I would like for us as a council to give very specific direction to city staff. And that would mean a, a information packet in thirty days or sixty days. A scheduled meeting to discuss with the council in an open forum within ninety days. You know, it tends to take a long time to get something done, and I don't wanna agree to act upon this urgency ordinance tonight without a plan in place that we can say to the members of our community that we, we are serious about wanting to move forward on something with a transportation goal, and the way in which we're doing that is, we'll bring this back at this time, this back at that time, and we need to stick to it.
Great idea. That being said, why don't we take a break, like David, think what his time schedule's gonna be?
Not to Mr. Ratty.
Well, besides the time schedule is what we're looking at. Or do we allow him to come back, them, the staff to come back in two weeks and say, "In order to do a comprehensive plan, this is what we need to do."
It would, and, and we would need, I think, also, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
Um, I think we would need to know some specific, specific areas that we need to look at. And then what I would do is ask, uh, the, the chief administrative officer and, and, and Mr. Moran, well, okay, to generate that kind of information and, and report with the, with the urgency that you're, what, what realistically can we bring back, and recognizing that you want it sooner than later.
Well, it, okay, but, and then it goes to, to our initial premise we don't have, that I'm aware of, is what are the values of the current council as it relates to transportation and parking and noise and all that? If we don't have that defined, what do we evaluate?
Well, and, and I, I would also look to the general plan, which talks about this topic. And it talks about the topic of reducing the carbon footprint. It talks about the topic of greening, uh, the, the community. Now, what, but, but I mean, in terms of reducing the carbon footprint, that, that does suggest a desire, if you will. But, but you may wanna look at those values and see if they need to be refined, and we can provide those to you.
And I think we do need, because the values of this council could be different than the values of somebody in another year or two, you know, also. And, and we, and we don't agree. I can tell we're not, we don't agree on everything already, so, um.
Which is healthy.
Oh, I, I totally agree, but, but that just makes the process take longer. If we all agree it'll be easy, we just go, you know.
No, but I just don't wanna say we're gonna enact this, and then I don't wanna have my office bombarded tomorrow morning with people saying, "When are you gonna get it done?" Because I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that. I agree with, we need to look at this. I agree with, we have a parking problem, we have a, a number of vehicle problem, we have a type of vehicle problem, we have a problem with people who won't maintain their vehicles, we have a problem with people who drive their vehicles and they're not permitted. We have a problem with people who are driving their vehicles, that they know they're not supposed to be driving their vehicles and parking them on the street when they're not supposed to be. I mean, we have, we have all these problems, and so if everybody in the community were following what we've already established, we likely wouldn't even be standing here talking about this, or sitting here. So, you know, it takes a little bit of consciousness of the members of the community who are not following the rules to start participating on one level, and maybe we wouldn't be in a, in a situation like this. On the other hand, you know, we, we do wanna make the community a more comfortable community to be in. And that, for me, does not mean if I wanna walk places that I wanna go, I don't wanna inhale what is coming out of some of these golf carts. And if you just look at the sides of houses on the main thoroughfares like Beacon, it's disgusting. It, it's just, it's black, you know, you look at, if I park my vehicle in its parking spot that I pay for, for off-street parking, you know, even though it might be six spaces in, it still gets just black if it's parked there for a period of time and, and not moved or cleaned up. So, you know, I don't wanna just enact something tonight and say, "Okay, if we don't do something now, you know, when is somebody gonna do something?" Without being conscious to the community to say, "We care enough about enacting this that we are going to put our efforts towards some solutions in a given amount of time." And I wanna just enact it and say, "Well, when we get to it, we'll do it." I don't wanna do that.
A lot of, a lot of pollution is not just from golf carts. So there's huge trucks in this town, there's backhoes, there's forklifts, there's-
I'm going there next.
You know, I mean, Jesus, I mean, those, the, the commercial vehicles, now that we have doobies in this town. I mean, the commercial vehicles are getting bigger and bigger and bigger, and there's more of them. Yeah, we reduced, we reduced the amount of full-size vehicles from eleven-hundred to four-hundred, but we increased the amount of commercial vehicles from, from seventy-five to three-hundred-and-fifty, I mean.
Maybe it's time for us to have an emissions control regulation like the cars on the mainland do. Maybe if you can't pass that test, maybe we need to have a testing situation here. And if that vehicle doesn't pass the test, then it can't be on our roads. I breathe that air day in and day out, and I have a horrible cough, and I touch the desk three hours a day, and it's greasy, crat. So we do not have clean air.
Well, Mayor, may I just offer this thought that goes back to this issue of pollution? Unfortunately, probably a lot of the people who have carts that are not running well, there might be some who are just, um, um, not paying attention. But there are many probably who cannot afford new carts or cannot afford expensive repairs. So maybe as part of this, we'd look at what incentive programs there might be, as the gentleman who was talking about. What incentives is to either, you know, the California used to have, they called the, what's it called, the junk car? Cash for clunkers. Um, and, and, and maybe that we have to be looking also at what incentives we can give for those people who otherwise couldn't afford to do this.
And I know, and I believe that that work has been done in the past.
We did that before. We've already done that, which is a great suggestion, but we did that before when, and maybe the system at the time had some flaws to it. I know everybody has their opinion, but, you know, Dudley and Jordan, at whatever level each one of them participated in it, you know, they went through this process of, of trying to do noise testing, right or wrong. But there was a whole bunch of incentive given. There were people who were given a year to save up for repairs, to, to repair their vehicles, to get them in good working order, for, it was exactly what you're saying. There were incentives that were being done.
Catalina Yamaha offers incentives ongoing, and they always have. They've always allowed you to come in, get your vehicle fixed, and by their graciousness, they've allowed you to make payments, and, and that, that goes on. So somebody who doesn't have a vehicle that's working well, that's emitting, um, fumes, and they'll take it in, and they'll help you out.
And there's government incentives for electric vehicles as well.
Jack Tousie.
Yes, I just wanted to comment about gas versus electric, 'cause I, I have both, and electric is very, very, very difficult to manage. It's really a tough game to keep it plugged in, knowing what you're doing, how many miles you're dealing with every day. And when you run out of gas and, or run out of electricity, you're calling to have your, somebody bring up your, your, you know, charge it, and it's just really difficult. somebody bring up your, you know, charge it, and it's just really difficult. But on a, on a gas car, I think 120 is, sounds good, because when I see these people, especially ones with electric that are 132 inches, they try to park, you can't hear them, they can't hear what they're doing, they're not used to driving electric, they come back and they try to park, and that thing is so long, they can't, they can't, they don't know how to park, you know, parallel park with a, with a extra-long car. And the longer we get like that, it's really tough when these people, especially if they rent an electric cart. So, they're just, they're really blind. They just, they want to drive right in like this, and the car doesn't, they want to lift the end in, you know, because they just can't get it in. So it's really difficult on this electric. I just, I just don't, don't leave us with gas cars, I mean, electric only, because it is a problem. And when you hear and you feel the tension in your car with gas, we're all raised that way, we know what's going on. So it's almost like a safety hazard on electric. It's so quiet, and you press that thing, and you, nobody knows you're coming, nobody knows you're moving. You gotta, you gotta think it all through. And some of you don't have an electric, some of you do, but I'm sure if you've had electric, you know the problems of trying to get that thing powered up and parking, and what it takes when you push the gas, and how fast you go, it's, it's a different feel than a gas car.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for that input.
Thank you.
That's good. Break time, maybe?
Oh, we're taking that break now, folks. Thank you. And Paula, next time, don't put cookies in front of my face, because it makes me want to eat them at the meeting.
Remember, we still have a closed session.
Oh, I thought we came for it.
No.
I told you.
No.
It wasn't closed session.
Well. Well. I didn't do it.
Somebody's gonna come up with another car, bigger thing, and they're gonna, and they're gonna.
I remember, I was talking.
I love it.
Here.
What you're doing.
Commercial vehicles.
No.
I'm sorry.
Please.
Have all these people.
Service.
It's a little.
We have a city.
Yeah.
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 Available parking for parking for downtown and inventories for available parking in different neighborhoods in town. And then some of our downtown parking is both residential and downtown, so we need to have that differentiated between the two.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What, so we're gonna direct him to do this, so I'm just trying to think, head off at the pass here. We gotta have some foresight. If, if the new Vons store goes in, that's gonna change the dynamics of parking, but also the fact that we're in the middle of winter, that's, they've gotta make accommodations for that, too. So they have to have some kind of foresight, and, and I know they do. We have a brilliant staff. As to, you know, what it's gonna look like when, however many cars are at Hamilton Cove come into town to take up parking for shopping, for going to the beach, for, for going to Vons, for visiting and touring, so, sightseeing, so.
Well, I would think that you could, with our database, I think of vehicles, you could figure out how many vehicles there are at Hamilton Cove and Pebble Beach and Triana and Burt Park, and those, those are vehicles that would come into town for more than an hour just to go shopping.
Okay.
So those might be, they could probably figure what the impact of those might be. And then, we know how many vehicles there are on the, on the hillsides.
What, what about maybe the Conservancy in Edison to find out how many vehicles that they have?
That would be, that would be part of the inventory.
Okay, yeah. How many they're gonna allow on the street each night, because I know they have a massive amount of vehicles, but how many are there gonna be on the street?
That same for the rentals, isn't everybody?
Oh, the rentals.
Mayor Proton Molson, I do believe that staff has done at least three quarters of that study already. You might have mentioned just a couple things we hadn't studied yet or put together that information, so that should be readily available.
That's why I say ninety to one hundred and twenty days for get back to us for us.
And the, and you, and the rental golf carts are in that, too, that mix? Okay. Mr. Tucey?
Yeah, I spoke with you all individually before, and you bring it up right now. The Island Company needs to build that Parker Court parking. They're willing to do that because they can make money with it, and that brings up Third Street coming across town to mitigate all this traffic at Vons and the corner of Clarissa. You need to address that issue. And Parker Court is really a reality. It's behind everybody. They can be three or four stories high, depending how low you go, and there you're gonna have parking for Vons, parking for the, for the museum, parking for, personal parking for people like that have a need a permit, business people, as well as adding company employee parking, and the Vons overflow, just like a store over town. You walk out into the parking lot with your groceries, you can walk across the street and go into the Parker Court parking lot. You really need to address that.
Well, Mr. Tucey, if you have heard something from them that I have not, because they told me that was not on the, not-
Mr. Rusak-
Oh, okay.
Said to me, he said, "I agree with Parker Court. We could make money doing that."
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Third Street, he said, "I'd be giving up five million dollars of land."
Okay.
He didn't say no, but he said, "I'd be giving up five million dollars worth of land." So you need to address how you're gonna work with him on that, but I think he's willing to do something at Parker Court.
Well, see, but, okay, well, one of his people was nuts that that wasn't in the plans, but, anyway, but if-
It is a casual conversation with him, because I've, I'm not afraid to goose him a little bit.
No, I know.
I, I, I think he would do that. Parker Court would be excellent.
Yeah.
Four stories high, back of everybody, and look at all the parking. It would be no, no different than going to, you know, a shopping center over town, walking across to the garage.
It should be a big relief. A big relief.
We just need to find the eleven million dollars.
But once again, we need to come up with our values.
Or to build it.
Because everything we're saying now is increase the number of vehicles. It's not reducing it.
Ollie, who wants to build this town bigger? Who wants to add all these venues out at the, out at the casino and out there? Who wants to bring all these people in? Okay, who gets the most benefit of all the, of tourism?
I understand.
Okay? I mean, it's there, you guys just need to get yourself a Donald Trump and negotiate.
And I, I don't think we're talking about bringing more vehicles in town.
No, we're not.
That's not my intention.
No, I know, but, but like you said, if they're entitled to eighty-eight more out at Hamilton Cove, bam, there we are again.
The reason I mention that is because I'm trying to exploit the point that it's getting out of hand. I mean, that's, that's where we can step in. It hasn't happened yet, and we can say, you don't get the eighty-eight vehicles, you get three vans, and those three vans can run twenty-four hours and anybody can use them in those eighty-eight units, but I'm sorry, we can't accommodate that. But that is if we come to the conclusion that we can't accommodate it, or that it would be healthy for the town to have eighty-eight more vehicles running all around, parking everywhere, and I'm not, I don't, I'm-
I know.
I'm not there yet, but I'm getting there.
I just have one, one last comment, and I'll, I'll quit taking up your guys' time. Again, I have to say, I, I'm the one that brought all this back up again.
No, you're not.
Well, I had a little, I had a little bit to do with it.
Yeah.
If we just go from sixty-one to sixty-five, where I can have the new body style, listed as a microcar, I mean, there's, there's a lot of things that's gonna come back up for table of discussions later. I, I do agree. But the, the, the width difference, I think, is critical. Now, we're not talking a bunch of cars, and I agree with Ollie. I, I agree with you. One for one, if it's a golf cart or a Smart car, if you want a new one, one's gotta go. I agree with it.
Well, that's how it is now.
Yeah.
Well, I can't have more than one golf cart.
I, 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 I like the one for one. That eliminates more cars coming onto the island.
Sixteen hundred.
I, I think it's a good plan.
Okay. Well, I still have a problem with it. I wanted a bigger than one sixty-six to accommodate a competitor.
Actually, it was sixty, we're at sixty-seven.
Yeah, okay, but he said one sixty-six again.
He knows. Yeah, we're good.
And I would like it to be, I'm sorry, in case it's not point one inch, and, you know, somebody's tape measures off, I would like to at least make it the, the one-twenty-one, so that it would accommodate, 'cause somebody buys one and somebody measures it just a little bit different. What? Well, Ollie had said one-twenty-two, and I'm okay with that, too, but, but Joe wasn't.
I don't, I think we're getting that, we're getting off there.
Well, that's something we decided we were gonna decide tonight, I believe, so I don't think we could, I don't know what we're getting off of, but, okay. So do you think just the numbers alone, just the numbers alone, of all of these little statistics, is enough truly for us to make decisions based on numbers? Don't we, do we need a circulation study? I mean, do we, you know, I mean-
I don't, I don't, I personally don't think we need the circulation study, because I think all of us have been downtown, and on the worst day, on the cruise ships days, when all the rental golf carts on the street, we still don't have a four oh five. You know, you might have four cars backed up at the corner of Crescent and Metropole-
Or Clarissa.
Or Clarissa and that, but I mean, that's-
There's twenty at Coney Island sometimes.
Yeah, maybe twenty, but-
More than four cars.
I got more than four cars, ten cars.
Trucks, trucks and four, seven weeks.
Right.
Truck, every, every-
Yeah, no, I know, yeah.
Business cars, what do you mean, the answers?
Right. Oh, I'm sorry, if you're, I get you, but you should probably be up here talking, but, go ahead.
I, I think the initial question is, is, and it's always been my contention, is that it's a parking issue, not so much as a vehicle issue, not so much as a traffic issue. It's parking in residential areas, it's parking in downtown areas, it's parking in Lover's Cove, it's parking, you know, anyplace.
Okay, so everybody stops their car at one time, and is it a parking problem?
Everybody-
Everybody's parked at one time during the day. Is there a parking problem?
In different parts of town, you will go to Vons and not find a place to park.
Okay, but how do we know when Vons is moving? We don't know the impact of what that will be in a year.
We, we have to, we have to try to understand-
I mean, how do we, how do we understand the Vons?
Vons has twenty-six parking spaces on site, in New Vons, which is more than they've got now.
And one of the things that, one of the conditions of approval for Vons is to come forward with a detailed traffic plan.
So why, why aren't we making them do that?
They are doing it, well, and it, they don't get to, they don't get to start building until they've done that.
They have, they are doing it, is that what you said?
They can't start building-
They said they already did a traffic study, which is-
No, 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 no.
They can't, yeah, they can't do it.
The additional requirement that the council put on with the approval of Vons was that they come back with an additional parking and, uh, traffic study. Okay, that was one of the conditions of approval, not the one that they did for the Sequo, but an, but an additional one. The clock is ticking, they have another eighteen months, and their entitlement expires.
And, and if they don't get it right, they have to fix it, correct? That's the thing I-
Yeah, it has to be approved by the city.
It has to be approved, but if it's approved and it's not, doesn't work, then they have to modify it again, and I said that specifically. And if it doesn't work, then they do it again. As I said multiple times, that they have to continue to fix it until it works for the community.
The, the city has control through your, through your ordinances, through traffic, to regulate, uh, the flow of traffic, to regulate parking, and it is not something that stops and halts, so your point, council member, is that if something is not working and it creates a problem, then it has to be fixed, and whoever is creating that problem will have to help fix it, and ultimately, I think it's going to, I think you're, I think the, the traffic issue is gonna be one that's gonna create a requirement for more access, for more accessibility, more circulation, for a whole lot of reasons, but that'll be something that the city will have to deal with down the road.
So, Mayor, your question to Ollie was, is there a problem with parking downtown? Something to that effect, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't wanna get to the point to where we go, there is a problem, there is a huge problem. No, there is no more parking, and, and we're, and we're heading in that direction. I, I think we've got a little more room, you know, that way, these companies can grow a little bit more, but, and, and our community, we have to give room to grow, but I don't think we need to, I think we have to have the foresight to understand that we're almost to the saturation point to where there's not gonna be parking. You might as well just leave your car at home and walk, because when you go downtown, you won't find a parking spot.
Right.
It's almost to that point now, when everybody gets out and about and starts doing their thing. That's why having vans, shuttle vans from these places, like, you know, running our transit system a little more efficiently is gonna help. Running vans from, uh, Hamilton Cove and trying to mitigate some of the traffic from out there into town. But I think we gotta keep, I think we have to have enough respect to keep Catalina Yamaha and, um, in the loop as far as, and maybe, you know, John, but he's not even here tonight, with the club car, but Yamaha's here, to keep them in the loop of what we're doing and keep them updated, because they did help us establish our, um, transportation on Catalina.
Okay. So what are we doing, folks? So statistics are never gonna be enough for us to get going.
Well, I think you, I think you bring up a point, that there, in addition to the parking survey of what's available downtown, I think we need to look at what usage of the utilization of the parking downtown is at different times of the day. 'Cause I just about guarantee that Friday at five o'clock, you can't find a place by Vons to park.
That's at this time of the year.
That's this time, that's, yeah, that's this time of the year, too.
Both Vons.
Yeah, both Vons. And, I mean, maybe we should expand the scope of it, just not to have the inventory downtown parking, but utilization study of downtown parking, so we can get some more hard facts for you.
I mean, our staff in a month or two, is they able to get all this with our existing staff?
I said three to four months.
Okay, but I mean, and then we-
Well, I think there's, a lot of this information has, in fact, I mean, it's available-
She says it has, but I, I know.
Yeah, I, I, you know, the, I realize we, we are where we are tonight in that, you know, our vehicle clerk is not with us tonight, but he has so much information, and, and all we need to do is just sit down and ask him, so I think we can get information quickly. I know that, that Jordan has done significant studies already and pulled a lot of information already, so all we just have to do is ask for it. I think, you know, as I mentioned in our, in our, uh, goal setting, you know, and John's here in our audience and has already given us a lot of information, I mean, the prior Transportation Committee that was commissioned by the council has a significant amount of information, that all we have to do is go and ask for it, and we start there.
And again, I think while they're gathering their information, we need to get together and talk about our values, and where we wanna see, because I think we, you know, we are, everybody says we wanna make this a pedestrian-friendly town, and so if we have parking everywhere and we have narrow sidewalks, how is that encouraging pedestrians, when, when you walk down a sidewalk in Avalon, you've gotta walk in the street?
Yeah, but we're not gonna change the size of the sidewalks, I mean-
Well, well, if we're looking to the future, maybe there are streets that that does happen when we work on circulation. Maybe we could be, you know, or bicycles. You know, it's hazardous to bicycles to go up and down the street, and maybe there's one, I mean, I think, thinking out of the box, not just trying to cram everything on our streets is what we-
Pedestrian-friendly is good. I see people perplexed, because they don't, they don't know when to cross the street, they don't know when the cars are gonna stop, uh, they keep looking back and forth, so I, I-
I mean, you can't wait to take a baby stroller and a, and a family down a sidewalk, you've got the stroller in the street.
I think purpose of, my purpose in asking for this to be put on was to get a cap on the number of golf carts right now, or number of vehicles in town right now, give us the time to talk about it and figure this out. I don't think that by doing this, we increase the number of vehicles in town, if we don't, we run the risk of increasing the number of vehicles in town. I don't think it cuts off any options we have when it talks to pedestrians and bicycles and bikeways and skateboards and stuff, it just, it stops the madness.
Well, then, if, if we wanna continue to stop the madness a little bit, I would maybe like to propose also that there are people that, that, okay, there are people that share vehicles. They share golf carts, and they share trucks. And, okay, do we wanna look at maybe something that doesn't allow that to happen?
Why?
Or is that something that's done later?
I don't get it.
Well, so, so I can-
What's wrong with me lending my truck to somebody?
Not lending your truck. You can lend your truck to whomever you want.
What do you mean, share?
But, but I have a place, you know, you can afford the, let's say you can afford the truck, but I got the spot. You know, and-
There's nothing wrong with that. You mean, if I have a blue sticker and, but I don't have a truck?
Right.
Something like that?
Sure, I know, somebody else-
Yeah, somebody else should be able to share their truck with me. If I have the blue sticker and they have the truck-
Now, it's registered to both of you.
If it's registered.
Doesn't, doesn't increase the number of vehicles in town, so I don't have a problem.
Okay, well, okay, well, how about this one? The, when you show where you live for your golf cart, you have to bring some identification that shows that that's in fact where you live and that, that somebody else hasn't given you a place to park their car.
What?
So, 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 okay, what happens is there are people who rent a room, okay? So somebody's got a, somebody's got a sticker at that residence, okay? And then you rent me a room, Cindy, and I go, "Oh, but Rich, can I say that I live at your house so that I, 'cause you don't have a golf cart, so that I could have one?" And that happens.
Doesn't it have to be a habitable unit?
It has to be a dwelling unit.
Right, right. But what-
One golf cart per residence is what it is.
One golf cart per residence.
Dwelling unit.
For dwelling.
What is that?
Dwelling unit is kitchen-
Right, it's a habitable unit.
Bathroom and, uh, sleeping area.
Well, how many, how many, okay, there's a three-bedroom house, and I rent out two bedrooms, and I live in one.
One golf cart.
One golf cart.
That's what I'm saying. We, we don't have a, the system, I, needs improvement to make sure that when they say this is where they live, they have provided something with their address on it, because there, there are some people that, some of that falls through the cracks.
Mayor Marshall, they do have to provide some type of thing telling us where they live. Now, you can come up with a fake lease, though, but if, if you and I and Richard are all living in the same house, only one of us can register a golf cart there. Now, we're gonna be clever, though, and I'm gonna go to Scott Campbell and go, "Hey, 'cause this happens, and then, and you don't have a golf cart, you don't want one, can I register it there?"
Right.
We have a lot, it doesn't happen all the time, but many times, we have a lot of people that report this to us, letters go out to that resident, the person, "Hey, you said you lived at Scott Campbell's address, you do not, indeed, you need to prove that." Now, do we catch them all, Annie? Absolutely not.
I know.
And, and unfortunately, and if we could think of some kind of program, or, it all comes down to code enforcement, we can't catch everybody.
I, I, I totally understand.
And when they're coming to you, looking in your face, and they are flat-out lying, you know, we, the vehicle clerk and code, they do their, their best. I get calls at home, and I'm sure like you guys, you get calls saying, "Why does this person have a golf cart? There's three in that house." Those are the ones we'll track.
Right, right.
And then they're, they're also highlighted in our system, so when they come to register, we question.
Red.
No, I, I know, but, I know, if they still fall through the cracks-
I understand what you're saying, Annie, but if we could figure out a way to-
Yeah.
Stop people from-
How, how, how we stop that as, as a lender from Mercedes-Benz Financial Services?
Okay.
We have people that give us all kinds of, you know, straw-buying capacities, where we have people that come in and wanna buy a vehicle, and they wanna register it in somebody else's name. But what we do as a lender, we ask for proof of residency, two forms of proof of residence, and we will only accept a utility bill. So you can alternate one, but you can't alter two, and our fraud department checks that as well. So if we get altered bank statements, people used to think bank statements were bona fide, so to speak, for lack of a better choice of vocabulary, you can check them through proof of residencies. In two forms, you can probably alter one, maybe two, but you can't alter the third one. There's too many checking balances. That's how we get away with proof of residency. One thing I would also wanna mention-
I thought you said you weren't gonna be up here again. But that's okay, Carter.
No, it won't happen.
I, I wanna, I wanna influence this little four-and-a-half-inch decision, 'cause it's very critical for me. Uh, and for the plan that we have in the future for here at Catalina, Catalina, uh, I've talked with the gentleman in here, and we talked about the Cash for Clunkers program, and to remove some of these old golf carts, and I, I think the, the two of us as business people, we can sit down and, and, and have a plan in place that's, that's cost-effective for him, cost-effective for me, and cost-effective for the city by removing some of these old golf carts. Whether we put a date and, and a value on how old a cart is, that if it's older than nineteen seventy, it doesn't have a value on it. But if it's a cart that's in nineteen eighty-five, they wanna trade it in on a Smart car, or they wanna trade it in on a golf cart. I mean, there's gotta be a value to that. Now, if, if I have, I have people right now that want to trade their golf carts in and wanna get a Smart car, but I don't have an outlet for that. So if we have a, have a, have a trade-in program or a Cash for Clunkers program, that I think the two of us can work out and make sure it's cost-effective as a business decision, I think it's a good plan. You know, my intentions are not putting anybody out of business. Golf carts are always gonna be on this island, and he, he's got a lot of years invested in, from family, as well as his, his integrity in, in, in his direction where he wants his company to go. I wanna help that, and, and I think it's a good plan, and him and I can sit down and, and make a good business plan together that'll work, and that'll work with you guys, taking some of these old golf carts off the island.
Okay, good.
That'd help out.
Okay, thanks, guys.
That'd help out a lot. Then we can do our job by maybe helping code do their job, which is-
So there's three things before us. There's the urgency, there's the diagonal for whatever, and that-
No, okay. Let me, let me, so let me go over what you have. You have two ordinances, one is an urgency which needs four votes, one is a regular which needs three votes. The exact same ordinance, other than just the number of votes. So, the first, uh, the first change is the width of the microcars, um, to sixty-seven inches, and the length is still at one-twenty, unless there's a, a request to add a specific provision at one, for this kinda car for one-twenty-one or, or whatever.
One-twenty-point-one, one-twenty-point-one.
That, I'm sorry, that's ridiculous. One-twenty-one.
One-twenty-one, okay, whatever.
One-twenty-one.
One-twenty-one.
I'm not into it. I like one-twenty.
Well, you've, you've just allowed people to not get a four-seater car over, over one inch.
But we have Mini Coopers-
One-tenth of an inch.
Mini Coopers fit in the box.
One-tenth of an inch.
Those are four-seaters.
Can I get a clarification here? Are you saying one-twenty-point-one?
Yeah.
Okay.
She's saying one-twenty-one.
Nine-tenth of an inch.
But we gonna vote on that?
Okay, that's the first thing. Second thing is replacement of vehicles. If you have an oversized vehicle, you can only replace it with a vehicle that's smaller, same size or smaller. This creates, this addresses the problem of people expanding.
Unless you go to the hearing office.
Unless you go to the hearing office. Third thing is, uh, the angled parking spaces. And, um, what we need to put here is, right now it says low-speed electric, but what you're really talking about is, are the-
Micro-
Low, low-speed record, or the, uh, microcars is defined.
Right.
And then the last thing is no new autoet permits, unless there's, one comes in, one comes out, and the only issue there is, if you are for that, do you wanna bank some autoet permits to burn off inventory? Which was the request of Yamaha.
Just explain to me the one in, one out.
So, in other words, the number of autoets in the city is capped at what it is right now.
Right.
So that nobody has issued a new autoet permit unless a permit, a, a autoet is, is removed, um, is, um, unless an autoet is removed from the island.
And so, okay, so, so what that is, okay, so let's, let's play that out, because first of all, that means now people are gonna rush to put their name on a list.
Yes.
First-
But we're gonna, when you were done, I have already spoke to Mr. Jenkins about it, I would like to propose that there is no waiting list until we figure out what the rules and regulations of that waiting list are gonna be, because-
Right, it's a cluster, that's a mess. Well, because January one, what, don't we start registering our golf carts again?
February.
February one? And we're not gonna be done by there.
If it is an urgency ordinance, it's effective the moment it passes.
No, no, but we could, we could-
You could put a date on it, yes.
But the one-on-one, we might not even say that's what we wanna do. Right now, we're saying no more. We may decide we don't wanna do a one-on-one in the future, right?
Yeah, you can, you can change. This is, the intention was to freeze it at sixteen thirty-five, or whatever the number is.
Well, let me ask this question, please. If, if my golf cart, which is three years old, that I wanna go electric, 'cause council's direction is that, so I wanna be proactive and get electric, like the mayor did, I take it down to Catalina Yamaha, and then I'm not gonna be able to sell it to, or, he gives me credit, or however that works.
That's right, there's no trade-in value if, if-
Because, but mine's a younger, a younger version, and he could sell that to somebody maybe with a two-stroke, so just, I'm just playing devil's advocate here. How, how does that work?
It would work in the sense that he could, you could trade it in, but, and that would go into his inventory for a, a new autoet permit whenever someone comes off the list.
But that could be years before one's away.
And, and to us, there's no value in something we can't sell. So somebody that spent, say somebody's got a cart that's worth $4,000 in equity, and they want to trade it in, well, we can't resell it. So they've just lost that $4,000. So they decide, well, I'm not going to lose that $4,000. I'm just going to keep my old car. It doesn't encourage them to trade in.
Well, why do we have to have the one, if we, if we do this emergency thing, why do we need, need to talk about the one-on-one until we've decided what we're doing?
You don't have to.
You could take that out.
You could take that out.
I could, I'd take my pen and I could go.
I mean, because that doesn't mean Denise can still buy a new car. She could still get a new car, because she already has a sticker. She just got to get, gets, got, has to get rid of that one. Yes, Jerry?
Can I just make a little small out-of-the-box suggestion?
Please.
What if the, the buyer, somebody comes up, they just bought a house on East Whitley, and they want a golf cart, and they agree to ship a car off the, or a golf cart off the island to get a golf cart here. Somebody wants to buy a golf cart from John, they, he says, fine, I'll sell you the golf cart. But the only way you can get the golf cart is to ship a golf cart off the island. You would rid yourself of all of these clunkers. They did this back when, I don't know if you remember, when they sold the Think carts, and I even did it. The guy said, I'll give you $1,000 for the, off the Think cart if you ship over a golf cart. I immediately went out and bought a $200 golf cart and shipped it off the island and got my $1,000 discount. It, it really invigorated getting rid of a lot of cars because it was a value to it. I think that Carson would even do something like that. He'd say, if you want to buy a Think cart, I'll give you X amount of dollars, but you got to ship me a golf cart if you can find a place to dump these things. But it would rid a lot of golf carts. It would give an opportunity for somebody that just rolled into town to get a golf cart, but it would also solve the problem of getting golf carts off the island by a one-for-one. But if this guy rolls into town, moves into East Whitley, he wants a golf cart, and you say, okay, we'll get on the list, and he looks at the list and it's five years, it's kind of, you know, doesn't really, isn't really fair to someone that, that didn't get here before the line was drawn. But it, if the solution is, if, I mean, if the, if really the, the goal is to get the carts off the island, and you gave everyone the incentive that they can get a golf cart, but you got to get one out of here first. And maybe that, I don't, maybe that'd work. I, I just feel that, that there's got to be a, a level playing field for somebody that wasn't already here, that comes a couple of years from now, and, you know, he's, he's stuck with no transportation on East Whitley. So, just a thought.
Well, let me ask you, since you're sitting there, what do you think about this doing it, Jerry? What do you think about this, doing this urgency ordinance for three or four months?
Doing it in the ordinance tonight?
Just, no, having, having the urgency ordinance where we stop all new ones for a while, for three or four?
Well, I don't have any problem with that because I'm kind of in the situation where I have mine, well, so what? But I think John would definitely feel that that was a little one-sided.
But we were talking about making a concession perhaps for John and John, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we were talking about a concession for them.
I, I'm not a big, you know, again, sorry, John, I'm not a big fan of golf carts. They're just loud, noisy. We get tons of complaints. I think the chamber even said the last time it was their number one complaint. You know, if, if we could, and I, I love the fact that we're progressively moving towards something else. And right now it seems to be this Think cart and, or car, I'm not Think, but I mean, Smart car. But it's, and we've managed to move to 100 of those. So that says, just kind of tells you that that's working. It may be not going to overtake golf carts, but at least it's moving in the right direction.
A different direction.
So I not, you know, I would love to see less noisy carts here. If, I would love to see if they could come up with a golf cart that didn't sound like a lawnmower, you know? So it would, it would be pleasant. And he has electric ones, and they, they're great. They, but again, you go back to the problem where you can't plug it in because you live on the flats, and there's no way to plug it in. So if you can get a, you know, and I'm sure they're, they'll come up with a way to reduce the noise of some of these.
Okay. Okay, one, two, three. Do we want to make a motion on these one at a time? Or can we?
You can make a motion, and you can have a discussion point, and then after you get the, you get a consensus, then you can, we can go forward with the vote on an actual ordinance.
Okay, so the first one is?
So the first one is, uh-
Size.
Size, uh-
Length, give me.
Up to 67 and length of 121. And includes, uh, the definition of a micro-
Together or separate votes? Because we had a difference, she, I want 120.1, she wants 121.
All right.
That was something that we would vote on.
Okay, we could do that.
Let's do it one at a time then.
Okay. So just consensus on-
67's good with me.
Well, 67, okay.
Everybody was in agreement on 67.
So now we're going to the length. So show of hands for 121. Okay, keeping it at 120. Okay, three votes for, so it stays at 120. Next one, replacement-
Why, why, I have just, although I don't understand why you wouldn't want somebody to have another option other than a Smart car. I don't understand that. By one inch.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with another option. I just-
We're going to go over this again.
I think we're, if you want my honest opinion, I think we're just throwing numbers out there. Because the next car that comes out in six months is going to be 122 and 123.
Well, then let's not approve the size.
Another option out there that's less in width and it's a few inches longer, that's just as good. And, and so I just, I mean, you're making a provision for, for one other-
For some other vehicle that might be out there.
You're making a provision for one other specific vehicle. You're not making a blanket provision, and that's why I disagree. If you're making a blanket provision where you're not talking about a Scion and a Smart car, you're, then I would be in favor. But since we're not, I'd rather just leave it at 120 and do the width and, because there's other cars out there. There, there's, and, and I've not been shy. I've been a fan of the Fiat all along. But the Fiat is, is narrower, but it's longer, and it seats four. So, I mean, you're, you know, you're, it, you're just making a provision for two. So I would rather-
Yeah, because I like people that we always say, we don't like monopolies, and I-
No, I don't like, I don't like that either. I, I-
How long's the Fiat?
Oh, I don't know. Fiat is-
Set of curiosity.
I'm sorry, the width of the Fiat is 64. It's 139. It's 139.
Way out there.
It's longer than, yes. And I'm not suggesting that we do the Fiat. I'm just saying that that's where I'm, you just said you, you didn't want to make it for one. I, I guess if we want to make it for two vehicles, then that's what we're doing. But nobody's here knocking on our door from Toyota.
You guys didn't, okay, this, this wasn't read right. I mean, the way, even though I voted on it, I did, I said 121, I said 120.1.
A 120.1.
We started it.
I didn't, I didn't say 120. I said 120.1. That was my suggestion. And that does accommodate for that car, so there's not a monopoly. And we voted on it, and so can we change that?
Yeah.
And vote on it again?
Yes.
No, you, if you said 120.1, the three of us voted for that.
Okay, that's, that's what I said was 120.1. I just, I didn't want to go to 121 because I don't want to go, I just don't want to keep throwing numbers that are bigger.
Do we have, can we have for 1, because we need three or four votes for 120.1. Show of hands for yes. Okay, four for that. Okay.
Thank you, Judge.
So that could, that could pass through an urgency. The next one is the replacement vehicles. Again, oversized, got to be, so what's the show of hands kind of-
Oh, oversized?
This is for oversized. If you have an oversized vehicle-
It has to come back.
And you're replacing it, it's got to be the same size or less. You can't go up.
Right.
Okay? We have four for that one. Okay?
Do we have four? Somebody vote no?
No, I think-
Yes.
I do vote, I do put no.
Okay. Because what, what are you thinking?
I'm just, I'm just not good with everything here right now. Just, okay. Just keep going.
Keep going. Okay, then we have the angled parking spaces with the language for the Smart, for, for the micro car, which is the Smart for two, Scion, or similar micro car. And that means that those cars cannot park in the angled space. Okay?
Oh, oh, I, wait a minute. Okay, that's a good question, Misa. Because are we now saying that those, the narrower ones cannot go diagonally? No, it's just the bigger, fatter one now, right?
No.
Scott, don't interpret what the council means.
Okay.
I thought, I thought we meant that the fatter ones had to go in diagonal, but, but the existing ones didn't. That was my understanding. Because I said, how are they going to tell them when they're close together? They're going to be hard to tell apart.
I think any vehicle that's outside of the autoet, which is 55 by 120, should not park in angle parking.
And they're right now 55? Okay, so that, so that you would stay? Oh, no.
No. Right now they're 60 point, they're 60.
How wide is the Samurai?
Long one at.
I, I don't know. How, that's a-
Mini Coopers.
Okay. So Samurai's are in?
The Mini Cooper fell into an autoet before. It was within the 55 and 120.
We can make Dudley's, we can make Dudley's day and add one more color sticker for the, for the new mini cars and the old mini cars. Old mini cars keep the regular-
Does it need to be another sticker? I mean, there's angled parking in one street.
How else are you going to differentiate between two cars?
I see Metropolitan Tune Club.
The way you can tell is by looking at the front of it.
Metropole Tune Club, it's going to be Von's Parking, too.
By the front of the vehicles, you can tell better than you can tell by the back.
There's parallel parking. What I said at the last meeting was, in, you know, we're just getting bigger and bigger. So, and it makes it more difficult for the people that are staying within what the autoet is. So it's one street, and there is other provisions to park. And I just, I, I think that's fair.
Can we put a scarlet letter on the back of the new ones? Scarlet.
I don't know.
So let's, let's, let's make a motion here. So we're stuck here. Let's figure it out.
Yeah.
Are we, are we going to allow the smaller Smart cars to park in those slots, in the, in the diagonal slots, or in the golf cart slots, I should say? Are we going to?
I think they should be able to allow.
I, I thought we were just talking about the new, larger, wider vehicles, personally. I think if somebody has a smaller Smart car, I don't have a problem, that's, that's four inches less. I don't have a problem with them parking there. If they want to risk getting their car scratched, I, I mean, but it's, there's enough space to where I think it's, it's okay. So, because we're moving forward, and I don't think the leases, this guy's changing out, Carson's changing it out, the leases for the, most of the cars. I don't think most people are even going to keep their old Smart cars, so.
New sticker color.
It's going to be kind of difficult for-
Will they? Will they now? Will, will most people be changing out those older vehicles? Or you think some people will keep them?
Answered question, no. They're going to just get new vehicles.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So, so let's just, okay, so, let's just say the new vehicles have to park somewhere else.
And, and what I'm trying to do, it'll be a, it'll be a no, and then it'll be defined again as that Smart car, micro car, greater than 61 inches. Those are the new, new larger cars cannot park in the angled parking space.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm just to clarify, but they may not, they may also not park in the full-size vehicle spots on the other side, correct?
Exactly.
Oh, wait a minute.
Because those are for cars with blue stickers.
Yes, correct.
And then where are they going to park on Metropole? All the way up to the museum?
Just asking for clarification.
No, and I'm just asking for what-
I already explained that.
The museum in front of the Ramusa, in front of the golf cart.
Explain that. They got to park somewhere else. They can't park there. We, we already established, otherwise I'm, I'm going, I'm going the other way on this. I'm, I'm going to vote no on everything. If you guys don't understand what I explained earlier, which was, full-size vehicles and golf carts are a way of life here. They're already established. The people have lived here for, for anywhere from 20 to 50 to, you know, 60 years that have those vehicles. That's why we established those places for those vehicles. These new vehicles that are coming in, they're going to have to, we're going to have to make provisions for them aside from what we already have established. Okay? So we have on Metropole, and, and we have established on Metropole, and also for Sumner Street, that we're going to have golf cart parking, and we're going to have full-size parking, vehicle parking. This just came up to us. It's changing the game. So they have to, they have to make accommodations to go around what we've already established here. That's what I'm trying to explain, is it, is, full-size vehicles are for, people who've been here for a long time. Golf carts are a way of life. The new vehicles, they're going to have their spaces. They're going to figure out where they can spark. They can park on lowers, on, on lower Sumner. They can park on Upper Metropole. They can park, um, out, going out to the casino. They can park over on Catalina Street.
They can take dial-a-ride.
They can take dial-a-ride or use public transit and leave their car at home. Exactly. Okay, is that okay? I mean, do you understand it now? Is it that complicated?
No, I'm hearing it. So why do we have, we have consensus on that one?
So, so it's going to read that the, the no, and I'm going to say the micro cars greater than 61 inches may be parked in angled, in any angled parking space within the city.
Maybe or may not be.
May not be, not be.
And not in full-size vehicle parking.
And, and if this is happening immediately, how does Code, first of all, when you write a ticket, what do you write it, is it just a $41 ticket like everything else because it falls within something, or do you have to make up a new price?
No, it's, it's within the-
Revenues for you.
Illegal parking.
It's in the, yeah, it's, it's the same illegal parking.
In all fairness, we need to put some sort of provision on that, that that begins in 30 days or 60 days. And we need to make members of the community aware of the change if that's the case.
Good point. When are the new cars getting here?
And maybe, you know-
Well, I think some people have already bought them. They're just waiting to bring them.
I think Misa already has one.
So a lot of them, a lot of those have already been purchased, and they're just ready to come, waiting to come over, right? Or they're sitting in a garage or something.
Okay, so as I understand it, it's, those cars cannot park in angled parking spaces and not in full-size parking spaces. Okay?
Okay.
And then the last one is the-
I just wanted to get your thinking, because if you're thinking something that I don't know, I'd really like to know. I'm sorry. He's sitting here quiet and voting no, but I really want to know because maybe he's got some insight that I would want to hear.
Yeah. Okay. And then the last one is the, the one in, one out. And what that provides is that what would trigger a new permit being issued is the expiration, non-renewal, or revocation of an autoet permit. So if any of those three things happen, expiration, non-renewal, or revocation, when one of those things happens, you get a new autoet permit. A new autoet permit is added to the list.
Right, again, I don't understand that. Because that's not a, that's, that's a waiting list.
Yeah, it's exactly what it is. Yes. That's the only, that's the only way it can work.
But until there is a waiting list, we have, are we going to go with what Denise's suggestion was, was no waiting list until we figure this out?
Well-
I don't think we should have a waiting list until we figure it out. Because people are going to start running in and want to put their name on a list.
Right, yeah.
And we, we're not there yet, I don't think. I don't, I don't, I don't agree with that one. Does the vote, come on, counsel.
Okay, so for that one, that would be the immediate, it would be the one, one in and one off immediately, because we're talking about the urgency. And that would automatically create a waiting list.
No, doesn't necessarily create the waiting list.
Well, okay.
No, we have an urgency, but just nothing happens instead of a waiting list.
Yeah.
Yeah. I would rather do an urgency than a waiting list.
That's what he's saying.
Well, I don't understand how it would work is if you're going to say that no more permits are issued unless you have a expiration, non-renewal, or revocation of one, you automatically, if someone wants them tomorrow, they don't get a, they don't get a permit.
On the urgency, they wouldn't get a permit. So then when we finish doing all of our homework and we come up with a plan, maybe our plan is that we start a waiting list, or maybe the plan is, no, we've got plenty of space there, but it can continue to get them. So we don't need to do the one-on-one.
Right. So we can take that off, and people can still continue to get permits?
Not if we do the ordinance that just puts the moratorium.
Oh, so no golf carts whatsoever?
That might be the other one that we would look at.
Okay.
I thought that was in here, too.
Nope.
With allowances that John and John-
It was one and one.
That was, the original thought was one and one, but we could, a straight moratorium with the allowance that the two dealers can advise us as to what their sales orders on the books are.
Within a certain period of time, hopefully.
Three days or something.
Thirty days.
The two dealers can let us know what sales they have on the books they haven't delivered yet, the orders they have. John sold a golf cart to you today, but he's not going to deliver it to you for a week.
He has orders.
He's got orders.
I understand that. I'm just trying to understand. So with no new permits, with the exception of-
The two. John and John.
Vehicles that have already, where we have executed sales agreements.
John, I'm looking at you.
I have inventory. Some that's not sold, but I have inventory.
So his inventory-
So let him sell it.
Should be able to sell it.
Let him sell it.
Okay.
Should be able to sell it.
But if, but if you have, you're not going to come and tell us you've got 80 golf carts lined up.
I mean, I know you're not a guy.
There you go.
Change everything.
So take, take into consideration, I've got over 50 buyers on new vehicles now. Some have golf carts, some don't. Some have Smart cars, some don't. So I can give you names.
They can swap those out, though.
They could only swap those out if they don't have, if they don't have an autoet, they couldn't buy a new one, unless we want to- they couldn't buy a new one, unless we want to put a provision in here that it's all the inventory of, and then we're going to have to define who the dealers are.
No, no, but if I give up my autoet, I can buy a smart car.
Yes, you can, but if.
So.
But if you don't have an autoet and you want to buy a smart car, you can't.
You can't right now.
What?
What do you do first? You buy a house, you can't buy a, a smart car?
Right. Not, not until we.
Okay, the master is going to be a golf cart.
Do you have to be, be here eight months? Don't you have to be here eight months anyways? Even if you buy a house, you have to wait eight months, right?
No.
You mean for a golf cart? No, I don't think so, it's immediate, you could get it immediately.
Really?
A car, golf cart.
I thought you had to be here eight months to get a vehicle.
It's got off-street parking for the first eight months or something like that, then you get on-street parking.
Okay.
Uh, I, I think the tension here is to protect our local dealers, not necessarily to protect our dealers on the mainland, because they have, they have another outlet for their vehicles and our guys on the, on the island do. Our guys outlets only on the island. And you guys, uh, all of Southern California.
And I'm the one spinning bugs on the island, and I've got to keep people from not selling. I can't sell a car.
You can, you can sell a replacement car, you can sell a replacement golf cart, until we get, I mean, this, this is all kind of a Band-Aid till we get through this whole process. It's what it's intended to be, is that we need to buy our time so we can sit down and discuss it, get the data from the staff, so we can make a more rational decision.
Why don't you eliminate that, deal with Sions, then you will care about that.
Because then we just open the floodgates and we get 300 more golf carts over, 300 more smart cars over, 300 more Sions over here. My concern is we have too many, I feel we have too many vehicles on the island right now. And I don't want to encourage more vehicles.
Who wants to buy a house? Who's going to buy a car?
They can.
What if you're going to get on Facebook, have a car, go grocery shopping, anything else, value? They're new here, council, I mean, come into town, spend money, live here, why would you like?
That is another of the concerns, is that, does that change the property value? If, you know, look at the realtors in town, if they want to sell a home, are they, is that going to be a hindrance for somebody buying a home if they can't?
To me, the basic premise is, do we have too many cars in town right now? And in my mind, we do.
There's people that live in, what are we doing about all these vehicles at Hamilton Cove that nobody drives? They're sitting there. Those people don't live here, how come they get a vehicle?
You know, Joe, as part of this, if we were, when we look at this, that's something I really want to talk about bringing back, is that a capped number of permits for Hamilton Cove and they can check them out?
Absolutely. Hamilton Cove needs a cap. That's where all our vehicles are at and they're just sitting there. Those are vehicles that other people could be, could have, but, you know.
I think it's part of the big discussion that we will have down the road, personally.
Who's going to buy a house in this town, a condo, that can't have a car?
Okay, well, number one, this is only a temporary stop. Number two.
One time.
I thought that's what he said.
We don't know.
I mean, you're coming to town, you want to be able to have transportation.
Well, I think probably in the future, people with off-street parking, that wouldn't be in question, and may, maybe, and if they're handicapped or have some disability, we'll accommodate them. Um, and it is the middle of winter. Jack, there is no, it's just like, when's a good time to die? There's never a good time to die. And the, the community, right? And the community has said, for years, we want you to take a look at this. This is the first council who already is sticking our necks out to try to make a change, because everybody has said, we've got problems and we want to improve the quality of life in Avalon, and that includes pedestrians and bicyclists, and no noisy golf carts and no big noisy trucks. People are saying that every day, again, until it comes time for you to say, but not me. And that is, we're willing to take the heat for that right now, because we are concerned about the community of Avalon. So, it's, it's painful, and we're all going to catch crap about this tomorrow, or maybe later tonight, but I think the fact, I think the fact maybe is too late.
Call in sick tomorrow.
Later tonight, we'll beat them off.
But I mean, this is, this is what people have said they want, now we do it and then they go, eh, maybe not.
If you have a house for a few places, you have free meetings, you sell, and there's two people want to move out, then the guy who buys the house can't, the two people come in, can't, can't move from another place and rent their car?
No. No, there's a 25-year waiting list for a car.
No, but they, they may be living in another apartment, want to rent your apartment.
On the island?
Yeah.
They can move it across.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then when somebody buys that house themselves, and they still got two tenants that live here now, but they, they, they have to be able, say, the owner sold the car to somebody else, and they, you know, the guy said he didn't want a solid car, he wanted a golf cart, he wanted a smart car.
For the next, for the next three to six months, yeah, if this passes this evening. Hopefully, it'll be a long-term solution after.
Right now, you kids are well set. You've got two smart cars.
But I'm just saying that this, from a standpoint of a real estate town.
I think this is all part of what we're trying to get to talk about.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah, it's the pain of, it's the growing pains.
I agree. I'm, I'm going to ask that we call the question, and with the question being whether or not we want to enact this urgency ordinance number, item number, whatever, we're on three or four now.
D.
And, D, and I want to, I'd like to see a time limit on it. I would like to see that, that it have the parameters that we've talked about, that it, that it comes back with significant information within 90 days, with a scheduled meeting within 90 days of the council to come back and, and look at that data, and then, within six months, have either a drafted ordinance change that the public can comment on, or item D times out and nothing happens. So, we're asking about a six-month opportunity to do what Annie's talking about, which is, study this, and, and it's us to say, we're going to be there and do it, we need to do something, but I, I, all of that has to be part of it, because I don't want it to just go on and on and on. I'm not in favor of doing this, but I'd be willing to do it in order to get to the conversation, which Jack's brought up points, Jerry's brought up points, every one of us have brought up points. We're like three and a half hours into this conversation, and I probably got another 50 points I'd like to bring up. And this isn't the meeting to do that. So, if we're gonna, if we want to talk about this and we are going to make significant movement, then let's move.
Sun sets in six months?
I can, okay. Trying to get direction. So, the way it's written right now, it's, we're not counting for existing inventory. So, that's the word, that's, that was the direction now. If, if you want me to revise it, I need specific direction as to, for dealers existing in Avalon.
That's excluding me, if I understand it correctly?
Yeah. As I understand it, yes.
So, so that each dealer then would provide a list of, or a number.
Vehicles that they have in the inventory.
Deals that they have, the verifiable deals that they have.
Current inventory.
Current inventory.
Current, so, it would exclude current inventory of dealers.
Based in Avalon.
Based in Avalon.
And it would sunset in six months.
And, and, and nothing would preclude the council if you had an answer sooner that you couldn't modify it.
Yeah, exactly.
Under, yeah. Work with you, Mr. Sampson?
Yeah. My only concern is, I, I want to make sure that, that Catalina Yamaha can stay solvent and, and continue to be in business. They, there's, that's my main concern, uh, right now.
Okay.
Uh, they've done too much for our community.
And so, we're saying.
And we'll continue that. And we, we need to help them get rid of these vehicles that, if people want to buy a new golf cart, we got to somehow get rid of these old vehicles and find an outlet for them to get rid of them, because they don't need to have the responsibility to do that.
Anything's got to work right now. Are we doing anything right now?
Yeah, maybe so. All right. There you go.
Carson, have you got written, written orders today that you haven't delivered?
For new ones that don't already have permits?
It would, it would.
No, Carson.
Excuse me?
Do you have written orders for?
Brand-new customers.
For new customers that don't already have a vehicle?
That is absolutely 100% correct statement. I have people that have signed three-year contracts.
Okay.
On employment here on the island, whether it's from US Bank or it's with a Catalina Island company.
I believe those should be included.
I do too.
We have been asking for six months for this to get on an agenda, so, I think that should be included.
Yeah, no, that's.
I just don't want to make, behalf of my staff and me making that phone call tomorrow, tell these people, you just got excluded.
But I, but I would like some proof from you that, that you're not adding any.
You guys, you can put a cap on the cars, put a, put a cap on them and I'll, I'll provide you names of the individuals. I do not have a problem with doing that.
Yeah.
We have no intention of excluding those people.
Right.
Okay.
That's the reason we're talking about all this.
Okay, perfect.
But you got to look at it from my point of view. I'm getting ready to dump a few hundred thousand dollars on the island. It's hard for me to go back to my superiors and say, we got approved for the width, but I can't sell cars. You guys understand where I, where I sit. I mean, it's pure egg on my face, I've been working on this now for years. I cannot sit and look at my superiors and go, you know, we got everything ready, but we just, you know, we're not going to sell you.
I know, but I'm sorry, Carson, we have been sitting, some of these people have been sitting here for 50 years and 60 years with a concern.
Exactly.
I was looking to sit. So, so, you know, we are, we are, we are dealing with things that have not been dealt with.
I respect that.
So, so, please, yes, this is not easy for us at all. So, I think we've all been pretty tough scared about this.
But I look at it from my, my.
I totally get it.
I don't know how many other dealers are beating your door down to invest money on your island, and when I'm told face-to-face that I'm excluded, you know, it, it's kind of.
That's why we just had this little thing.
You're not excluded.
Then we realized you weren't.
But, but these guys have established a lot and have a lot more invested in the community, but you are not excluded.
Yeah.
So, here's what the language is going to provide.
Okay.
Okay. Excluding existing inventories of Avalon-based dealers and verifiable pending sales of, and then we're going to have the definite, you know.
Mainland.
No, the.
Smart car.
The microcars.
Microcars.
Comma.
Microcars.
Then, the language as it's writ, writ right now, no new auto, no new auto permits shall be issued. Or, no, and new auto permits to only be issued upon expiration, renewal, or evocation. And then it says, this subsection shall expire within six months as of the, of the date, the adoption of this ordinance. So, in its provisions, you're saying, this, this limitation only goes for six months.
I have a next question, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So, 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 it come January, or whenever Dudley says, two vehicles, full-sized vehicles came, are off, they, these people can't get them.
You have people on the full-sized waiting list.
So, that, they'll continue?
Yeah, this is, this is for autoets.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that somebody's going to.
And actually, this is, if there was a typo, this is going to be subsection E, but.
Okay, okay.
That's fine. So, if you do that, then, yeah, at, at, for six months, anyone that is existing inventory burns off, and anyone that's got a verifiable pending sale.
Right, right, okay.
They are excluded. Everyone else, then, everyone, that doesn't mean that people won't be able to get autoets.
Yeah, they can swap them out.
It's just, I mean, that they can swap them out, or.
Yeah, okay, okay.
So, business goes on.
It, it, no, 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 it's going to be just like the full-size vehicle.
Right.
Is that if, when one comes off.
No.
Oh, that's right, hang on, hang on.
No, no one coming off. If you have one, you can replace one.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can replace one, so it is like one-off, but we're not going to call it that, I guess.
Okay, this, it's not the one-off, we're, we're not allowing any new autoets.
Yeah, we're not doing waiting lists.
Anymore, right?
But you can't replace it, because what are you going to do with?
No new autoet permits.
You can, you got to get rid.
Leave the island.
You, you, it leaves the island, so you.
Okay.
Put it on the barge and then you purchase a new one from one of these guys.
Or you dump it on city property.
Okay, so, let me get the language, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I just want to make clear. So, the language is actually, no, excluding what, what we've talked about, no new autoet permits of any nature, whether residential, commercial, and any other type valid issued, shall be issued. So, boom, we are stopping autoet permits.
For six months.
For a six-month period.
And I really hope we can get it done soon enough.
So do I.
Oh, it's, there's going to be a lot of pressure.
Yeah.
Starting tomorrow.
Well, we have.
Do we all have a straw vote, straw vote on that?
Yes.
Can I ask the council if they're willing to have an extra meeting once a month, the next four months, to just maybe two-hour window frame of.
Yes.
I think Mr. Jenkins and I discussed this already to, about four months out, I think it was, David, wasn't it, to discuss the vehicles till we can get to a comprehensive change in the code.
Can I ask your opinion, Denise?
No.
I can ask it, you're just not going to share it? Okay.
Straw vote?
Straw vote on that new provision. No new autoet permits, people who have existing permits can get a new car, and if you've already, you've entered into a contract or the existing inventory, burns off. Other than that, nothing for six months unless the council decides.
So, if in two months, we go, wait a minute, that was really a stupid thing.
You can come in and you can go ahead and rescind it on an urgency basis.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and hopefully, this is, okay, so hopefully this will happen a lot sooner than six months, though, or
Yeah, that's what I just said.
Right, we're going to work hard on that, just so you guys know.
Okay, so I got a, can I get a straw vote of that? Okay, so, it appears from the various straw votes that there is support for an urgency ordinance that does what we've talked about tonight. What I would suggest is, if you want, I can, I can frame the motion, and we vote on the urgency ordinance. And then, I think it would be appropriate after the, if that passes, to also vote on the regular ordinance. And the reason for that is, if we ever got challenged on the nature of the urgency, the regular ordinance is valid anyway. You just have to have two meetings of that.
I guess
Oh, I see, but that
It's possible that It's possible that this is just going to open up a can of worms, but I'm going to say it anyway.
Of course you are.
Well, I think it's only fair. If we determine that the urgency portion of this short-term moratorium until we sort things out, we decide to scrap it, my intention was that the first couple items still went forward, so that the smart car still goes forward no matter what. You can
Oh, right.
handle your people right away.
Well, that's what he was saying.
That the auto, oversized autowet
Right.
stays no matter what. That the only thing that we would be changing if we decided to scrap that urgency was this one for one.
That's why you said do one and run.
Okay, so I just want to be clear that, Carson, you can, if this were approved, that you could handle all of these leases that have been trying to get this sorted out for months.
Okay, now, I sure hope going ahead forward, we, we deal with some of the other problems that we have with huge vehicles in this town. Dulies, tractors, backhoes, excavators, dump trucks, just huge vehicles coming in.
And that'll be part of the study session.
Just screwing up our streets and there's a lot to it, so, okay, so
You want to frame the motion?
That's all I want to say.
Okay, so the appropriate motion would be to, is, would be to waive all readings and adopt an urgency ordinance of the City of Avalon, California, amending section 4-4.105, adding new sections 4-4.105.1, 4-4.103, and 4-4.10, no, 1704E to the Avalon Municipal Code to adjust the size of autowets and vehicles permitted in the city, restrict the parking of autowets, and govern the replacement of permits for vehicles and autowets. And the ordinance would have the changes and the language that we have discussed in the various sense of the council votes tonight. So, all that language would be incorporated into this ordinance.
So moved.
I just really want to know what Richard is thinking.
So, Ole, you're, you're, you're the first to motion, so I need a second.
I'll second.
I'm sorry? All in favor, raise your hand, please.
This is the fourth, fifth one?
Yeah.
Fourth, fifth one, which is effective immediately. Okay.
All against?
So, my understanding is that in an urgency ordinance, it has to be published in its entirety immediately, or as soon as it can be published. It has to, is, is that, is that your understanding?
Right, well, it's, I think, within 15 days, so I'll, I'll get the language tomorrow.
I'll, Dan.
In this town, it'll
Okay.
It does, it's been 15 days.
Having said that, I would also like to
Move the ordinary ordinance.
To move the ord, so, the other ordinance would be to introduce and waive all readings of an ordinance of the City of Avalon, amending section, I have to read this, it's required by, by law, 4-4.105, adding new sections 4-4.105.1, 4-4.103, and 4-4.104E to the Avalon Municipal Code to adjust the size of autowets and vehicles permitted in the city, restrict the parking of autowets, and govern the replacement of permits for vehicles and autowets. With, and that would be, that ordinance would be with the language discussed and outlined earlier tonight.
So moved.
Second. Further comment? Raise your hand for yea.
Four.
All against?
One no. That concludes this item. Now, we have the hospital board and a closed session.
Yes. So, go ahead, Ole.
Okay. I'd call the order. The Avalon Municipal Hospital Board of Trustees meetings of Tuesday, August 20th, 2016. Ms. Ratty, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Cassidy?
Here.
Trustee Hernandez?
Here.
Trustee Marshall?
Here.
Trustee Sampson?
Here.
And Chairman Olson.
Here. Any announcements?
None.
None. Any written communication?
I have none.
Presentations? None. There is no oral communication because there's nobody left to have communication with. Consent calendar.
There are two items on the consent calendar this evening. The first one is actions from the November 15th, 2016 Hospital Board of Trustees meeting. The second one is the CFO's board report for October 2016 and the CFO's October 2016 report.
I'll move to approve consent calendar items one and two.
Right, I, I am second that, please.
Discussion? Call for the vote.
All eyes?
Perfect. General business, there is none. I have no report. Members report?
I have none.
We are adjourned.
Nice party.
Yeah, really.
It was.
I didn't go to that either.
No, it was a good party.
Okay, now, we're going into closed session.
We have one closed session item. It's a conference with real property negotiators concerning the property on Whitley.
Okay, and we'd like to say Merry Christmas, Tony, and to you and your family.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.